Good evening, Commissioners. Hello there.
Hello, Commissioner Howe.
Hello, good to see you all.
Yeah, good to see you.
Tom, you're giving us a different view today.
Yeah, this I was telling Lisa, this is the called the hotel office space.
Is this the casual, more casual approach these days?
I'm in Tucson.
Oh. That's dedication.
Got it.
Lisa, can you confirm we're ready to start? I think.
It is 6:32.
All right.
And we have one, two, three, four, five, six. We have the six of you that we had planned to be in attendance tonight. So. Yeah, so it looks like you can call the meeting to order if you all are ready.
Fantastic. With that done, I would like to call to order the May 13th, 2021 meeting of the Louisville Planning Commission. With that, a roll call, please.
Hey, Commissioner Deal.
Present.
Commissioner Moline.
Here.
Commissioner Howe.
Here.
Commissioner Heffner.
Here.
Vice Chair Rice. Chair Price.
Present. Thank you very much. With that done, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Today's agenda.
And Commissioner Moline with the second, thank you. All, we agreed last time we can do this as a voice up.
Yes, that's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention, well, that would be silly. Opposed. All right, hearing none, we'll move ahead with this evening's agenda. Initially here, we'll start out also with a motion to approve the minutes of April 8th, 2021 meeting.
Still moved?
Thank you, Commissioner Moline.
I'll have to abstain from this and probably shouldn't second because I was not in attendance.
I'll second that, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Howe. Thank you, Commissioner Deal. All in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
We have one abstention. Commissioner Howe.
Yes, I abstain.
And no opposition. With that then, we will move into, if there are any members of the public who would like to comment on an item that is not on this evening's agenda, we would ask you to raise your hand if you're on the video feed, or if you're on a phone, please press star nine. And that will indicate to us that you are here to speak to something that is not on this evening's agenda. And Lisa, if I can ask you to confirm that we don't have any activity in that area.
I do not see any hands raised.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yep.
All right, then moving on, we'll move into our first item of new business. An amendment to Louisville Municipal Code Regarding Inclusionary Housing. I believe Director Zuccaro is presenting on this.
I am. Good evening, everyone. Rob Zuccaro, I'm the Planning and Building Safety Director. I should be sharing my screen now, so if you can't see my PowerPoint, please let me know. So again, I'm going to be presenting tonight. We also have City Attorney Kelly attending the meeting tonight specifically for this item. There's certainly a lot of, could be a lot of legal questions about the ordinance, so we did ask that City Attorney Kelly attend. So please know she's here if you have any questions. I will be fairly brief as well because we do have a big agenda, so if you want me to go into anything in more detail, please just stop and ask me to do so. But this is a public hearing. And so I'm going to give public notice certification. It was published in the Daily Camera April 25th of this year, and then posted in all required locations at city facilities by April 23rd of this year. So all public notice has been met. Okay, so just a little bit of background, just so you know, and I know we talked about City Council's work plan at a very recent meeting, but I just wanted to remind you that affordable housing is on City Council's 2021 work plan. That's the genesis of us bringing this ordinance to you. They've broken it up into two phases. They did ask that staff in the planning commission consider an inclusionary housing ordinance as a first step. There are a lot of cities in our region that have inclusionary ordinances. We included some of those in your packet, Boulder, Longmont, Superior, and Lafayette is what we included in your packet. City Council was very interested in considering an ordinance as well. There is a phase two, which we won't be discussing tonight, but this is to talk about broader efforts, policy considerations. You know, some of some common ones are commercial linkage fees. There could be a lot of financial and zoning incentives that could be considered. There's been a lot of discussion about our one manufactured home park and ways to help preserve that. So those are all things we hope to be talking to you all about in the future in a second phase.
Hey, Rob, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I realize that I've just biffed my, my new introduction of my new script here.
Oh, we'll take a pause then.
Yeah, well, I'd see if I can catch up here tactfully. So I have now opened the public hearing on a request for LMC amendment regarding inclusionary housing. Just to let everybody know, the purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there'll be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. In this case, staff is the applicant, or yeah, the city is the applicant regarding this proposal. So after the presentation, members of the public who have joined the meeting by computer or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to use the raise hand function. If participating by computer or star nine, if calling in by telephone, comments may be limited to three minutes per person. The purpose of the public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing, well, in this case, staff will be requested to make a closing statement and will then close the public hearing, and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. And you have already given us a notification. I want to double check. I don't believe we have any planning commission disclosures on this one, but just to make it official, if anybody does, please speak up now. And in that case then, Rob, I will ask you and apologize for interrupting you, but to proceed with public hearing. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think it's important to also note that the city fairly recently endorsed the Boulder County Regional Housing Partnership, Regional Housing Strategy. So this was a really collaborative regional effort with all of the communities in the county and the county to, you know, create a backdrop for all of the local jurisdictions to initiate policy changes with the goal of trying to get 12% affordable housing, permanently affordable housing in the county by 2035. So this, everybody recognizes, I think, this is, you can't really build your way out of this. So there's a lot of strategies such as inclusionary housing, which gets part, gets partway to the goal. But there is also recognition that you, there's probably a need to acquire and other more creative tools, you know, acquiring existing properties and things like that. So just a little bit of background, all of that information was in your packet. So a little bit more on what generally is considered affordable housing. Usually you're looking at something like 30% of your income. If you're having to spend more than 30% of your income on housing, it's considered that it's not affordable to that household. So we often see these different groupings of affordability, and it's based on your area median income. So every area, of course, has, you know, different housing prices, but also different incomes. So usually base it on that area median income unique to our, to Boulder County. So usually you see 60% or below as being affordable. And here's an example of what that might be affordable to the type of family. And then you typically see a grouping of 60 to 80% of AMI. And there's also a 80 to 120% AMI, which is sometimes considered more workforce housing. But really in Boulder County with housing prices, the way they've been and been escalating, really all of these groupings could be considered, you know, workforce housing for a lot of people, depending on people's circumstances. So what is influencing affordable housing? There's lots and lots of things influencing affordable housing, but here's just a few that are very often discussed, especially in our region, certainly low inventory. And a lot of that is the new employment to new housing ratio. So there is a tendency to build a lot of employment, you know, new commercial, industrial, office. But the housing development isn't really keeping pace, at least within the county. On the ratio from the report included in your packet shows from 2007 to 2017, there were 3.5 jobs for each new housing unit built during that time period. I don't know that that's equalizing out, you know, a new housing unit might have 2.5 people on average or even less for multifamily. So it's really not keeping up with the demand. Certainly there's more housing being built outside of the county, but that's the last, that's contributing to this last bullet here, which the cost of housing isn't just the housing. Oftentimes, there's the housing transportation cost nexus. So the further out you have to go, there's certainly implications for air quality, quality of life, but also the cost associated with having to live far away from where you work. So that plays a role in housing price as well. I'm not going to go into any of this, but it's in your packet there. We do have a lot of comprehensive plan policies that do support trying to find affordable housing strategies. So our proposed ordinance, we are proposing that with any new development, so this is any new PUD, new subdivision plat that proposes new housing units, that at least half of it would need to be affordable to households below 60% of that AMI. The remainder could be 60 to 80%, but in all, 12% would have to be permanently affordable through a deed restriction. So this could include rental or for sale units. So there are several options. So if we have a new development come in, and it's a housing development, they would have to meet those thresholds, build it onsite as part of a mix, a mix within that development. If we do have a current PUD that hasn't expired, hasn't hit the three-year point, and they, they propose more housing units, this would only apply to that net increase in housing units. So it wouldn't apply to anything that they've already been entitled. If that PUD, and that's if the PUD is current, if the PUD expires, then all housing units would be subject to the inclusionary standard. There are several alternatives. They don't, you don't have to meet it with building onsite. There's a fee and lieu option in our ordinance. There's an option to develop offsite. And then there's a land dedication option that can be combined with fee and lieu. The value has to equal the fee and lieu, the value of the land along with the fee and lieu potentially would have to equal what your fee and lieu would need to be. There is an alternative agreement option in there as well. So the city would need to administer this, but we've talked a lot about probably partnering with other jurisdictions or other housing, or the housing authority to help administer this. That would need to be determined. But there's a lot in the ordinance about how to administer this as well. Just a little bit, there, I do, there's a little bit of a pro con analysis. There's also a Lincoln Institute policy paper on inclusionary, which I think has a lot of great information. But I think some, some of the, the pros of having inclusionary is that it does promote a mix of housing and income types within a neighborhood and within the community. So it does help lead to integrated and inclusive communities. There is a lot of, when you talk about inclusionary, and one of the things you hear a lot is that everybody else in the neighborhood, it costs more. They're just subsidizing the housing. It's just raising housing costs. There is some good information in that Lincoln Institute paper. It does suggest that in strong housing markets, it doesn't cause an increase in the market rate units. It's typically absorbed a little bit by the, the cost of the land for a developer to acquire the land and a little bit in the developer profits. But again, in a strong housing market, there's certainly indication that it doesn't cause any significant increases in the market rate units. Our ordinance ensures that there is equal quality in the construction of the housing of the affordable and the market rate units, and it does provide needed workforce, middle-income housing for the community. Some cons that we could consider is that the additional regulations could discourage additional housing development and further restrict supply. There are a lot of cities that have prefer financial incentives and believe them to be more effective than the inclusionary requirement, so more of a carrot and a stick approach. The city does have limited undeveloped residentially zoned property. So even with this ordinance, under our current zoning and land use policies, there would be a limited ability to build new affordable housing within the city. Certainly, we couldn't, you know, approach that 12% goal without some other strategies. And then it would require additional staff capacity expertise, so we would have to work that out as we move forward on implementation. So with that, I'll just close to note that staff is recommending approval. There's a resolution in the packet recommending to City Council approval of the draft ordinance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. With that, we open the Florida Commissioner questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Thank you. Go ahead.
You would entertain them. They're sort of related. The, the first question is, I assume there are many more people who fall into these affordable categories who would like to obtain one of these units than there are ever going to be units. And I was hoping you could just explain how, what's the mechanism for deciding who gets them?
So that's a great detail that I don't know that we could address with any specificity until we, we kind of get some units onboard, and then we'd have to figure out how to administer them with whatever partner we had. I know with Kestrel, which is our most recent affordable housing development, but that is managed by the Boulder County Housing Authority. There was certainly more demand than there were units. There were some qual, there were some criteria set because of federal funding. So folks that had, I think, based on residency, and if they were displaced by the flood, that they had preference to get into the housing units at Kestrel. I, I, beyond that, I'm not sure if we would use a lottery-type system is my best guess on kind of filling a new affordable housing development.
Thanks. And my second related question is, do you have a sense of sort of what the, the percentage is? You know, say, say we adopt this and it's, it's law for the next 10 years. How many affordable units are we going to get? And how many, how many people out there are going to be looking for these affordable units? Is it, is it, will be able to create units for 5% of the people looking for 2%?
Sure, yeah, that's a great question. And, you know, we do have, you know, several affordable housing developments in the city. We used to have our own housing authority. But we did, we didn't turn that over through an agreement to the county Housing Authority quite a few years back. And I want to say that we're somewhere in, I believe, the 4% range of our total housing units in the city now are affordable, and they're managed by the county housing authority. So I don't have an exact estimate on if we, if we redevelop all of our residentially zoned land. You know, it's lit, I would say, you know, I, we're probably limited to a few hundred additional units in the city. I would say definitely less than 1,000 for sure, probably on the lower end of just a few hundred units. So we'd be getting, you know, 12% of those new units in the future under this ordinance.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner Heffner. Commissioner Deal. Yeah, Rob, I just had a question about the fee and lieu. Is that money, would that be set aside for affordable housing?
Yes. Yeah, that would, that would be restricted to being used for affordable housing. There is some flexibility on, you know, the city using that directly or using that in partnership with someone like the county housing authority.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Moline.
Um, Rob, a question about, we hadn't heard any public comment on this, at least as of the, as of the time that the packet went out. I'm just wondering if we've heard anything since then, and has the development community weighed in? Yeah.
Yeah, so there, yeah, one of the addendums you received today, I think, did include some written comments. I believe that some were, I actually haven't had the chance to read them, so I don't know. But, but I believe at least one of them was from a developer with concerns about the ordinance.
Okay, all right. Thanks. I'll, I'll reopen that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other additional questions of staff or? Alternatively, we can move in at this time to public comment. If there's anybody, go ahead. Then we'll get everybody ready. You can raise your hands if you are wanting to speak. Go ahead, Commissioner Howe.
One more question, Rob. You mentioned that in a strong housing market, the concerns about discouraging the development and increased cost of housing don't exist. What did it, what did those articles state if it's not a strong housing market? Fortunately, Louisville's always had a pretty strong housing market, but.
Right, so that, so I, it, so it did say, I think that the article, the portion that I was pointing to did specifically say that in general, it doesn't tend to lead to inflated housing prices. But that, that's especially true in a strong housing market. So I don't really know the specific data behind that policy paper. I didn't read it in that type of depth to see, you know, maybe what the, you know, where do you start going in the other direction, right? So I'd say, you know, I don't think we're in that place with Boulder County. There is a very strong demand for new housing, really the whole Denver metro area. There's really such a strong demand. But I don't know what that threshold would be, but I, I do believe that in a really weak housing market, you know, it certainly could have an impact.
Okay, thank you.
And Lisa, can you let me, if anybody is raising their hand to speak on this?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Any participants seeing the full list?
Oh, we do have a number of folks with their hands raised for public comment, which would appear to be for this agenda item. So let me know when you're ready. We can do a screen share on time.
Okay, great, yeah. We can move into that. We will go ahead. Just to remind people, comment is limited to three, three minutes, and we are not allowing aggregating of time.
Great.
So with that, we will.
Would you like me to call on them, or do you want to, do you want me to call on them just based on the order they're listed here?
Call on people. And are you using, when I click on participants?
Yeah.
I see a partial list. It doesn't allow me to scroll down, and that part of the list has no hands.
No.
Oh, there we, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Okay.
I see seven hands raised, right? Yeah.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, so why don't we begin the, in the list that I have? Howard ordered, there's Anne Marie Jensen who has her hand raised. If we can ask, we will, we will go ahead and unmute you, and your mic is live now, Ms. Jensen. If you could, please share your thoughts.
Hi there. I'm Anne Marie Jensen, and I lived in Louisville for 15 years, but I now live in Lafayette. And I am here today as the Director of the East County Housing Opportunity Coalition. We are a grassroots, independent coalition to educate, inform, and train East Boulder County residents about affordable housing needs, proposed projects, and how to be an effective advocate. And we're currently working in the cities of Louisville, Lafayette, Erie, Superior, and Longmont. And I'm somewhat disappointed because I know some of our members wrote in written comments in advance to hear that you guys might not have received them. So we followed what we thought was proper procedure to get those to you, and it's concerning that you might not have them. But that cannot be helped at this moment. But I want to thank the city for moving in the direction of creating more affordable housing and beginning to take steps to achieve the city's affordable housing goal. The goal of the regional housing plan is interesting because it's both ambitious, because we have so little affordable housing, and at the same time, not nearly enough to meet the needs. So it's both. The National Association of Home Builders and their research paper on inclusionary housing states that inclusionary housing requirements around the country range from 10 to 25% of total units. Our, our friends over down the way in Boulder currently have a 25% inclusionary housing requirement. This proposed Louisville ordinance is thus at the lower end of what we are seeing nationwide. And we believe we need to increase the amount of the ordinance if we're going to achieve our goal of 12% by 2035. And I was also grateful to see that you have a phase two where you will be considering other options. As we're reviewing the literature on criticisms of inclusionary housing ordinances, many folks point to the fact that it's really hard to use them to build affordable housing for the very low-income residents of our community who are at 30 to 50% of area median income. So I encourage you to think about additional incentives to get developers to build. Is maybe fast-tracking the permitting process, less, less requirements for landscaping, those kinds of things could be to the top to encourage developers up for even lower income households. And in fact, I was asking you.
Ms. Jensen, I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to interrupt. Ms. Jensen, I'm sorry to interrupt you here. Unfortunately, we are out of time. There was a bit of an issue with hearing you at the last part there you were speaking. There was a bit of an issue with hearing you at the last part there you were speaking. How about if we just give you a little bit more to wrap it up if, if we're getting.
I, I would just suggest you may want to consider lowering the 60% threshold in the ordinance to 50% because we have so many people at 60%, you're talking around, I think somewhere around 50 some thousand, 54,000. So I would encourage you to think about lowering that because even teachers, service workers, they can't afford housing at that fee. So I'd encourage you to go a little lower. And then I, I, there's more comments I'd have to make, but since I've gone over time, I won't talk to you anymore. But I would encourage you to talk to us. We are trying to activate citizens in the community on affordable housing. And we have a lot of interested folks who want to support you and help in any way that they can to try and create more affordable housing in our community.
Thank you very much. That went a little bit better there. Appreciate your comments. Moving on then, the next person that shows up on my list is Laura Weiss. We will unmute you in a moment here. And if we can ask you to state your name and address, please.
Hi, yes. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
My husband and I are here. I'm Laura Weiss and my husband is Chris Seidel. And we live at 421 East Street here in Louisville, Colorado. And I'm actually been, my family actually moved here in 1897. And the land we've lived on is, was in 1906 is when they first bought it. So we've been here for a while. But while we're college, we're on the other end of this. We're actually the property owners who went under contract and sold our property to developers. And what we ran into and impacted us greatly, and we want to ensure that as you're looking forward, that we, that other people that ran into the issues that we ran into that are currently under contract or have reached, are currently under contract and for the developers that have recently just bought property, that were not notified of this potential tax on their property, on their development of the property, that that be given a grand, sorry, that they be given a grandfather clause of some sort. Because what happened with us is that we, the developers go, they do their due diligence before they do an offer. They talk to the planning commissions who did not at that time know that there was going to be this proposed tax because we went under contract in January. And then what happened is we move forward, they make plans, they work with the city. They've been working with the city for three months. And then all of a sudden, the last week of March, they were, they were notified that this developed, this tax was going to be proposed and that they were going to have to find the money in the budget to do that. And what happens is they don't have the money in budget. And they have to actually say, okay, well, we have to take it from somewhere. So the concessions then come to us and say, hey, if you still want to sell your property, you have to help us pay this tax. You know, or help us figure out a way to do this. And I don't, or they have to walk away. And I really don't want that to happen to people that are currently under contract because you're not getting the money from the developer. The developers that can't afford this, that in good faith, after working with the planner and not knowing, and the planner didn't know either. I mean, they, you know, because this was something that came up around March, was that in good faith of moving forward and making an offer to contract to build in Louisville. You know, they built their budget, they're ready to move forward. And now they're getting hit as well on the other end saying, hey, you've got to figure out how to pay for this or you have to redesign your whole system, your whole design. You know, so I just want to make sure that the people that are, have been through, that are working through this process now aren't in effect may be in the ones to pay or have to walk away or impact the owners. Because it's, as, as you know, when you buy from a developer, you sell to developer, your prices are still lower than if you were at this time because of construction costs. They're still lower than if I were to sell a single house at a time to a person who's just moving in. And so that's all we wanted to say and ask for grandfather clause of some sort that would help protect the owners and those developers and help continue to move forward with the development plans you guys have and have approved.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I was a little circular there.
Well, moving on then, I have Debbie Haseman or Hazeman. We will unmute you and if you can begin with the proper pronunciation of your name and your address, please.
Hello, good evening. I'm Debbie Hazeman. And I have been a Louisville resident for 30 years now. So I do want to thank you first for having this conversation.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. If we can have your address, please.
Oh, it's 247 South Lark Avenue.
Thank you.
So, so thank you for having this conversation about how Louisville can provide more affordable and inclusionary housing. It is a really important, huge first step and I appreciate it. 30 years ago, Louisville was much more affordable for new homeowners like my husband and me. There was more diversity in the types of housing on the market at that time. And it helped us to find an entry level home we could afford. That is not the case today for new home buyers. I believe that Louisville is what it is today, which is an amazing community because all kinds of people were able to buy here years ago. And I want that to continue to happen today. So as, I, I also am involved with the East County Housing Opportunity Coalition that Anne Marie talked about. And I just want to emphasize again that Echo would love to brainstorm with you and problem solve to help identify more tools and creative ideas for Louisville to provide a variety of affordable and inclusionary housing types. So the goal of 12% by 2035 is really important. But I do think it needs to be higher in, in our work in, in developments to reach that 12%. I, I would hope that 20% or more would be the goal that Louisville would set in, in developments and in acquiring new affordable housing to reach that overall 12% goal. Diversity of housing types creates a vibrant and interesting community. We need to provide housing so that our retired senior folks can stay here and so that younger, new homeowners can live here. We want this age diversity. It strengthens our community. This is a deeply held value of mine. And I believe that my community of Louisville is a community that supports all to have a safe and comfortable home. And this includes our grandparents, our parents and our young adult children just starting out. So Longmont also has some interesting ordinance that provides developers for, with incentives to build that middle tier of housing. So that's something to look into and it's been quite successful. So, wow, I'm running out of time, but thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Certainly. Thank you very much. We appreciate your participation. Moving on then, I see somebody who is identified on screen as Nola. If we can unmute you and if you can give us your name and address, please.
I'm sorry. It's Stephanie McLaughlin and I am at 1075 Falcon Court. And I'm actually here to talk, I mean, to have a comment about the last thing on the agenda. But it's a little confusing to me because one of the first things that was said was housing isn't keeping pace with jobs. And the last thing on the agenda is doing a new business development, which I'm assuming will bring jobs. How serious is Louisville really about inclusionary affordable housing? To me, this just sounds like an exercise. Is there any specifics that you can give us that this is actually doable in any way, shape or form? That's it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Moving on then, I see Kimberly Byrne Lawless. Again, if you can state your name and address for the record as we unmute you. Go ahead.
Actually, this is Kevin Byrne. I, I was working with Laura Weiss. I'm a real estate agent here in Boulder County. So we were selling 421 East Street and 533 East Street. And I guess I could just give you a little feedback. You know, we reached out to literally hundreds of builders. We found a few who, based on, you know, the pricing in Louisville that, that had interest. And, you know, once we went under contract, you know, we found that, you know, potentially, I think it was about $8 a foot, buildable foot that they're adding on for the affordable. You know, added about $600,000 to the builder's costs. And bottom line is, you know, we had to negotiate that out of the client's, you know, side. But I, I guess my point is, you know, the housing prices are obviously going up. It's becoming less and less affordable. You know, especially as a young family to get into Louisville. That's my, my opinion. And it, and it's very hard for, for builders to be able to build, you know, units. They're doing townhomes that are, that are very expensive. And I guess another question is, you know, are they, are they going to actually build them? Or is it going to be a cash and lieu? And is that funding additional affordable units? So, you know, are we solving the issue? I guess would be, would be kind of my point. But going back to Laura's point, I, I think there should be something out there that grandfathers either projects in, in queue or in planning and developments that, you know, they will not be affected by this until, you know, this, this ordinance has passed. So I hope, you know, you guys take a look at that and have some grace and some mercy upon, you know, sellers and, and, you know, developers just upfront until you work out the details. Obviously, I think it's important to have affordable units. At the same time, I, my experiences in Boulder, that has become very prohibitive. And I, I'm curious, you know, besides the million dollar projects they're building, are they really providing a solution now or are people just, you know, doing cash and lieu? So I guess just, again, I hope, you know, the council will, will look at, you know, potentially doing some grandfathering and then really look at this in a, in a, a good way to implement it. So there's full transparency to people who might be building in the future. That, that's it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your thoughts and comments.
You're welcome.
Moving on then, next on list is David Senke. And I'll let you know, so actually on, on the on deck circle is Jennifer Samuels. I guess I could have been warning everybody a little bit better here. So David, if you could begin with your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is David Senke, 712 Main Street, Louisville, Colorado. Thank you for your time tonight and consideration of this matter. Boulder Creek Neighborhoods is my company. We're a residential housing developer. And it is my opinion and experience that inclusionary zoning is not a particularly effective way of getting additional affordable housing. We build affordable housing in a number of municipalities up and down the front range. And I think the, Rob Zakhar used the term stick and carrot. I think the carrot methodology is much more effective in order to really make a dent in affordable housing. Larger projects with substantially higher percentages, maybe even 100% of affordable housing need to be developed. The reality is, building and developing for an affordable unit is very different than market rate. You just need to be able to do things more efficiently. And so the scale of the project matters. And I think that inclusionary zoning typically creates more of an impediment for smaller projects that are really not designed properly for affordable. And I think we would just see a lot better results with initiatives that really give incentives for the right type of housing that we're looking for. So that's my opinion. We stand very much by and eagerly await the opportunity to, to coordinate with the city and, and any group that wants to learn more about the economics on the builder's side. We're a pretty transparent, open book, would love to show people how it works and how it doesn't. We have a lot of case studies on both affordable and market rate projects. So with that, thank you for your service to Louisville and good night.
Thank you very much, Mr. Senke. Moving on then, in the on deck circle will be Catherine Smith. And right now we will unmute Jennifer Samuels. And Lisa, I'm not able to see if she is unmuted.
I, so Jennifer, I think you'll need to unmute. There you go. You should be ready to speak now.
How's that?
We can hear you now. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Samuels. I live at 1388 Kennedy Avenue in Louisville. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in favor of affordable housing in Louisville. I've lived in the city for four years. I work part-time as a nurse practitioner and full-time as a mother of two kiddos, six and four years old. I own a property in Denver, which I rent to a single mother who participates in the housing voucher program down there. I recently attended a parent teacher association meeting at my first grader's school. And there's worry amongst the educational administrators that school enrollment is declining because young families such as mine cannot afford to live in Louisville. With rents skyrocketing and purchase prices already out of the reach of many, it is important for the citizens of Louisville to be deliberate about making it possible for those with income below the area median income to live in our great city. Do we really want to be the kind of community that only the wealthy can afford? I believe a community with folks from diverse economic backgrounds will make Louisville a more interesting, more thriving community. There are two points made in the inclusionary housing ordinance that I would like to highlight. Because of, because most of the city is already built, the proposed 12% inclusionary housing requirement is too low to meet a 12% inclusionary housing goal. Boulder's inclusionary housing requirement is 25% and Superior's is 15. For Louisville, a 20% inclusionary housing requirement is a more realistic number in order to reach a 12% inclusionary housing goal. The ordinance requires that a minimum of half of the affordable units be affordable to folks at 60% of area median income. According to Boulder Housing Partners, for a family of four, that is an income of $69,000 per year or $33 per hour and below. This is a step in the right direction, but this will not be sufficient for our service workers and even many professional employees. And it is also true that the city can do some creative thinking about incentives to get developers to build housing for the 30 to 50% of AMI and below. And that 30 to 50% of AMI is 1726 to 2877 per hour, which is still not even the minimum wage. I thank you for this ordinance. It is most certainly a step in the right direction. But even if we achieve our goal of 12% by 2035, we all know the problem is greater than that goal. So please stretch and let's do more. Again, thank you for your attention to affordable housing in Louisville and for the opportunity to speak this evening.
And thank you very much for your thoughts. In the on deck circle, we have somebody identified as J. H. Cooperman. And we will unmute Catherine Smith at this time. If you can begin with your name and address.
I don't want to leave, just medium runs. I'm muting it.
Sorry, as we move in to Miss Smith. Lisa, can you mute our last speaker, please? Thank you. All right, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Catherine Smith. I live at 608 West Street in Louisville. And I'm here tonight to be a speaker on behalf of nature, the plants, the animals who cannot speak for themselves. And also just to remind you that I do think Boulder County and Louisville are very special. We live in a particularly beautiful place. And in part, that is because of our open space. And I would ask that as part of your consideration of this project, you look at the possibility of desert, the permanent designation of open space so that not, not just the current residents of Louisville, but people 50 years, 100 years, 150 years, 200 years into the future are able to experience what we have today. Once you pave over property, it rarely is restored, rarely goes back to nature.
Ms. Smith, I, I apologize for interrupting you here. So right, our first agenda item this evening is actually regarding a proposed ordinance for inclusionary housing.
I'm sorry. I didn't, I tuned in late. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, 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 it's quite all right. We're, we're happy you're here. I think you're going to want to speak to the next item of business, which has to do with the storage tech property. So if you'd like to, we can just recognize you at that point in time. And, and you can, and share, you know, share our thoughts kind of in, in the proper context, if that works for you.
Yeah, that, I apologize again. That's absolutely fine.
All right.
It would be nice as, if the public, if I could see the agenda on my screen, just for future reference, if that's a technological possibility.
It's also a. It's also available on the city website. So, um, yes, I don't know. I think we probably, we, we will take that into account and see what we can do for future meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly. And then we have a, a J H Cooperman. We will go ahead and you are, um.
Hello?
Yep, there we go. If you can begin with your name and address, please.
Certainly. This is Josh Cooperman. I live at 216 Griffith Street in Louisville. Mostly I would like to express my strong support for, uh, this type of legislation that would, uh, provide for inclusionary housing in Louisville. I'm not an expert on this topic, so I don't know if this is the, the best way to approach inclusionary housing, but it seems like a, a pretty good idea or a very good idea, perhaps. Um, I would like to make a few, uh, small recommendations regarding some details of the proposed, uh, legislation. In particular, I'd like to echo some previous, uh, comments, uh, and suggest that 12% affordable housing is perhaps too low. In particular, because of the, uh, the point that was made earlier, that there is actually very little developable, very little land in the city that could be developed for housing. And so 12% wouldn't necessarily go very far. I would also like to suggest that, um, the figure of $7.90 per square foot as a fee in, in lieu, uh, is probably too low. I know, I know the, the legislation, uh, provides a mechanism for changing that amount. Uh, and I would say that it should probably be higher. That, that number is based on an analysis in Longmont where the housing prices are notably lower than they are in Louisville. The last thing I would like to suggest is, um, uh, a recommendation for the section in the, in the legislation on, um, qualifying applicants for the affordable housing. I would like to suggest that something be included in that section, which would give preference, uh, to those seeking affordable housing who have historically been subject to discrimination in housing. There is very clear evidence that African Americans, Hispanics and indigenous peoples have been discriminated against in housing all over the country. Uh, and I would like to see Louisville make some effort to make amends for that, uh, history. I don't know necessarily what form that preference should be, um, but perhaps this is something which be, could be coordinated with the new task force on diversity, equity and inclusion. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments. See, we have an additional person here, RJ Harrington, who has raised their hand. If you could, uh, begin with your name and address, and you are currently unmuted.
RJ Harrington, 457 East Rain Tree Court. Thank you for your service, Commissioners, to our fair city. I try to be additive anytime I make public comment, which is why I waited till the end here, Chair Ron Ice. And, uh, so I will just echo our neighbor on Falcon that talked to, is this actually feasible in an ordinance form? And that seemed to be built upon by the fellow that, uh, commented from Boulder Creek Builders. And the reason that that seems to be amplified is there really isn't that much more buildable space. So if you look at the economics of this and a project need, would need to be quite large to take advantage of economies of scale, I wonder if this stick approach is in fact the right approach. I completely concur with everybody else that says we need more affordable housing. Over the years, I've testified in favor for more housing. And the fact that the next item on the agenda is more commercial development seems to speak to where is the carrot? Where is the stick? And where is the housing for all these new jobs? And I'll stop there. Thanks again.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you, uh, working, working it the way you do. All right. I, um, believe we have addressed all of the members of the public who have raised their hand. And, um, at this time then, I would also entertain a motion. So, um, just as a note of clarification, the, the emails that have been received, um, have been distributed and they are posted online, uh, also on, on the city's website. And with that, then we're going to officially, uh, take a motion to bring those emails into the public record.
So move.
So move.
Second.
Thank you very much. Favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Anybody opposed to that? Seeing none, we will, uh, move forward and, and bring those into public record. With that, then I guess, uh, with the commission members, I would like to kind of reopen it up while we're still open, uh, for the discussion for any additional questions you might have of staff at this time.
I have a question.
Please go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, so in terms of this, uh, issue of grandfathering, um, Rob, maybe you can talk about, I think the, the language in there would account to grandfather in, uh, developments or developers who've already, you know, basically moved forward.
Right, yes. Yeah, the way it's written right now is anybody who has a PUD or plat approved that's current, would, uh, not be subject to the ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Moline.
Um, Rob, I'm, I'm, I don't know if this is really a question. I hope it is and not a comment. So my question is, the ordinance seems kind of complex, I guess, and will require a fair amount of new city staff time and city analysis. I'm, I'm wondering, let's just hypothetically say that, that this gets approved. How quickly, like, so we approve the ordinance, how quickly does it become implementable or operational? Would you be willing to comment on that?
Sure, yeah. So, you know, once it goes through city council and assuming it gets approved by city council on second reading, so they go through two readings and then have their public hearing. And then it's about 30 days after that. It's, it's 30, I don't know the exact time, but it's about a month. I think it's 30 days after the second reading when it goes into effect. So if we had a development come in, um, you know, with new housing after that effective date, then yes, we would be needing to figure out how to implement it. I would say we've had, you know, quite a few conversations with regional partners. I think there's probably opportunities on entering into partnerships on, on how to implement this. So yeah, certainly we couldn't do it with our current staff now. We really don't have the expertise or the capacity, but we, we could, um, certainly partner with others to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howe.
Hi, Rob. What do you see the, there's been some comments regarding an increase in the minimum of the percentage of new housing that would, that would meet this inclusionary housing? What do you think of the disadvantages of if we were to raise that to the, uh, some people are saying, you know, 20, 25%?
You know, the one thing I think of is that, you know, it certainly does, you know, we have had some discussion here this evening about, um, you know, the, the complex calculations that go into development, right? And that the higher that goes up, um, you know, there could be more cost associated with, uh, a new development. So it could theoretically deter new development at some point with a higher number. Again, I don't know what the, I don't want to say that 20% would or wouldn't, but at some point, um, you know, raising that number might have more of that effect.
It's a tricky threshold and, and of course I would rely on someone else to do those. I don't know what that number is. I know that I, from my understanding, costs are increasing and, um, but, but I guess that would be, that would, that's an interesting thought that I have is where would that threshold be that we could, we could increase, but yet keep it, uh, or, and, and then maybe even incentivize? Have you guys thought about incent, incentivizing? Have you looked at the, uh, operations that Longmont is providing for their developers?
Um, you know, we've looked at it. We've, we have, at, at least with this first draft from the staff level, we thought we wanted to keep it fairly basic and simple. And knowing that there were other options and opportunities out there, and we do hope to talk about those with that phase two. So, you know, what you see, um, in a lot of inclusionary ordinances are, um, you know, maybe fee waivers, um, or, um, you know, even density bonuses or consideration for the project having a smoother path forward through the planning process. So these are all things that I've seen in other ordinances that we could consider that could supplement the 12% requirement potentially.
And what would the timeline be for that phase two that you alluded to?
Well, we do hope to have discussions with city council, um, later this year. I don't know the exact dates. I think, you know, it's a very busy year from a work plan standpoint for all of staff, including planning staff. So we probably have more than we can get to, but we are very hopeful that, um, you know, I would say in the second half of the year, probably more towards quarter four, we might be having those conversations.
Thanks, Rob.
Commissioner Deal.
Yeah, one more quick one, Rob. Do you or does staff know, uh, with regard to Superior and the 15% threshold they have? Do you know if that's, uh, been in effect for all the new housing development?
It's a, yeah, that, theirs is a very new ordinance. They just, um, passed it within the last year. My understanding is that, that it will not apply to their new downtown development and the new residential development in their downtown.
Okay.
I don't know exactly what their threshold is for when it applies, but, um, that is my understanding because that is entitled development in the down, the new downtown.
And there's two additional developments, not, uh, in downtown, right? But on 88th. So, um, just curious if those, those were able to absorb that cost and move forward.
Yeah, I, I, I do not know the answer to that question specifically.
Okay.
Commissioner Moline.
Sorry, um, I, I did think of one more. Rob, would you care to comment on, I think we heard from one of the public speakers that they recommended us moving that 60% of AMI down, down towards 50, I believe, to, kind of try and capture a, a different sort of population, I guess, or different, a, you know, people who are, are struggling even more with that affordability question? If I understood that right, um, would you care to comment on thoughts about that?
You know, I, I've got to say, I don't, I don't really have enough knowledge of all of the thresholds. I'd probably want to research that, speak with county housing authority, bring some additional expertise to answer that unfortunately.
Okay, nope, that's totally fair. Thank you, Rob. I appreciate it.
Any additional questions of staff? If not, at this time then I'll close the, uh, public hearing and we will, um, invite a staff summation.
Yeah, thank you. Not, not a lot to summarize. I did want to make, based on some of the questions, um, mention about the fee in lieu. We do have the Longmont fee currently in the ordinance. We do intend, we've reviewed their methodology, which was included in the packet. And we, before city council second reading, we do intend to, um, do our own, um, fee calculation based on current data and Louisville specific data and present, we just didn't have time before this hearing, but we do intend to do that and present that to city council and see if there's a difference in those costs.
Good. Thank you. And then, um, a- anything else? I guess not. Okay, great. Thank you. Then we will move into commissioner comments and discussion. We can, uh, I can either, I want to let you raise hands, Commissioner Howe.
Yeah, I, I think I'll just provide, uh, a launching pad for some, some discussion among the commissioners. You know, I hope we can prove to Boulder County that Louisville affordable housing is not an oxymoron. I believe the intent of this proposal is genuine and Louisville needs to create more affordable and inclusionary housing. But I think how, housing availability is also a concern in Louisville, as everyone can probably attest to. And we need to carefully balance attracting quality developers and providing more affordable housing. And I wonder if we go far enough on this proposal. It seems like there's, there's other questions that I have, such as, uh, should we aim for higher than 12% in the, in the remaining PUDs? Should we incentivize the affordable housing for developers to achieve lower AMI and to encourage rather than discourage development? And then, and how do we increase such housing without increasing housing costs overall? We don't want those costs to be, one of the biggest problems is, is affordability, not only for, for everybody in Louisville. So I think we need to achieve that through these proposals. I, I, I just feel like this, like we took Boulder County's recommendations and, and just kind of plugged them in and said, yep, this is what we want to do. It, it seems like maybe we can even do better. I think we need more affordable housing and I wonder if we can do even better than this with more careful calculations.
I believe Commissioner Deal, I think you had, uh, waved your hands there. Oh, no, actually, go ahead.
Thanks. So I, I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Howe just said. This is obviously a, a very important issue and I agree with a lot of, a lot of the comments we've heard, um, on the need to make Louisville more affordable for the people who, who work here or who want to work here, uh, or who want to share in our community. I, I agree with Commissioner Howe though, that this is, this is a policy that feels like it's going to benefit a relatively small number of low and middle income households, while denying to many, many others who might otherwise qualify, um, you know, the, the benefits being provided. And I question whether this is the right approach. I, I would mention, you know, if you look at that Lincoln Institute study, I, I wonder if they're not engaged in a little magical thinking that you can create affordable housing from nothing, um, by not increasing supply, um, or, or not having higher density, somehow you can get more affordability across the board. If you look at the study that they describe as, as quote, "the most rigorous to date", the conclusion it reached is that in, in both Boston and the San Francisco Bay area, when they adopted how, uh, inclusionary housing policies like this, um, during periods of high housing prices like we're experiencing right now, prices only went higher across the board. And in Boston, the housing supply also decreased. And so I sort of question whether that Lincoln Institute study really stands for the conclusion that, that it states, or, or whether they're engaged in some wishful thinking. And while I recognize, like Commissioner Howe said, I think the intentions here are very good. I, I worry that we're going to be saddling Louisville at large with less housing supply and greater housing costs to benefit a very small number of people. I, I also want to echo what we heard from Mr. Senke, that it might make sense to look at policies that really make it possible to do higher density development for affordable. You know, looking at waiving density requirements or reducing minimum lot sizes or doing something that can actually increase supply and maybe take a little of the pressure off. So I, I, I think with something like that included, I, I might find myself in support of, of this proposal. But as drafted, I, it, it feels like a well-intentioned idea that's maybe not quite the right fit.
Commissioner Deal.
Sure. Yeah, I'll try and keep it short. You know, my view is this is, this is definitely a Band-Aid to a solution. And obviously the, the main root cause is the lack of supply, as, uh, you know, Dietrich points out. But given the, you know, the comprehensive plan, what the citizens of Louisville have said, you know, they want different open spaces to be developable, developable into, you know, that's, that's a decision for the ci- citizens to evolve on. You know, we're kind of governed by that. But given the, the resident, the, the parcels that are zoned for residential, uh, I'm in favor of having the developments on those parcels support affordable housing by, you know, either fee in lieu, which could be used to create other units, other places, or, you know, building affordable units right in those, in those lots. So I'm, I'm generally in favor.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Commissioner Moline, looks like you're.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go next. It's interesting. I, I agree with all of, all of the commissioners before me, I think. And I'm probably going to fall on the side of supporting this. And I think for me, it's, um, it's more about getting. And I think for me, it's, it's more about getting this for our first foray into trying this housing, inclusionary housing principle of, and forwarding it to the city council that has this on their, has this on their work plan. And I'm, I agree. I think there's some questions about how this is, you know, how much of an impact this is going to have. And I've also appreciated Commissioner Hefner's perspective on looking at all kinds of other methods to, to address affordability and inclusionary housing in this town. And I think this would maybe be just the beginning measure for it. But for that reason, I'm, I'm going to be supportive of it, I believe, just to, to have us take this initial step. And I believe it's something we could fine tune through the, through the timeframe, through the years, if we needed to modify this ordinance to, to make it work better for ourselves, so.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Rice.
Yeah, I mean, I share many of the concerns that were articulated by Commissioner Hefner. But I'll just say, overall philosophically, I just don't agree with the regulating the housing market in this manner. I don't think that either A, it leads to an economically efficient result. And I think B, in fact, it always leads to unintended consequences. And so I, I do not support this proposal.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that this, it does not feel like it's a, something that's going to have a massive impact, right? I think we all agree that this is relatively limited. We've heard if, you know, given a 10-year projection of maybe a couple hundred units of housing, that we'd end up with a couple dozen units of affordable housing over the next 10 years if those were to come into fruition. That said, I, I do feel like it's a start. It's a start and it's a start to that acknowledges that this is a regional issue and acknowledges what other communities have done in the area in an attempt to address the issue. I am more excited to see what phase two might hold and how we might be able to better achieve the goal at hand of providing some sort of affordable housing for all the reasons that have been discussed. So at this point, I, I find myself in favor of it and knowing that it, you know, is not going to have a massive impact, I don't think. So with that then, see if we have any additional commissioner comments or discussions. Commissioner Howe, you're muted right now. Yes.
Sorry, in your understanding, would the phase two be additive to this? Or would, would there be changes to what we're seeing in front of us?
Well, we don't know what phase two would hold. So it could go any direction that council and their work with staff might end up pushing it, I would think. So.
Okay, thank you.
Don't know, yep. Would you entertain a motion, Chair Brice? Yes, please. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number Five, Series 2021, a resolution recommending approval of an ordinance amending Lewisville Municipal Code Title 17, zoning to add a new chapter 17 dot six seven six regarding inclusionary housing. And a second for that?
I will second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Moline. And our roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Deal.
Yep, pass, yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
Commissioner Hefner.
No.
Vice Chair Rice.
No.
Chair Brice.
Yes. With that, it carries to city council. And I, I think we'll all be interested to see how the issue unfolds over the years ahead. Thank you very much. With that then, we're going to move into our next item of business. Why don't we move through some of the basics here? Why, why don't we take a quick five minutes for a quick break? And then we'll come back and begin our second item of business, the Redtail Ridge General Development Plan Amendment Proposal. It will be a quick five. Great. I see we have everybody back here now. Thank you. Now, those of you who joined us at the beginning of our meeting will be familiar with the language I'm about to read. I will now open the public hearing on a request for the Redtail Ridge General Development Plan Amendment. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from planning commission to staff. Next, we will have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the planning commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting by computer or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to use the raise hand function if participating by computer or star nine if calling in by telephone. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close, scrolling, oops, scrolling around here a little bit. I will then close the public hearing and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter, may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Moving into the issue then, I believe Director Zakaro, you are on point for this. And if you could.
If I could, I need to recuse myself from this one for a conflict of interest.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hefner. And do we have any other disclosures or, Commissioner Moline? You are muted. Jeff, you're muted.
I'm, I apologize. Yeah, I'd like to disclose that I'm an employee of Boulder County Parks and Open Space. And the Boulder, Boulder County is an organization prepared referral comments for this development. I was not party to the development of those referral comments and I'm not unduly impacted or influenced by those comments.
Thank you very much. Moving in then, if Director Zakaro, if you can speak to proper notification.
Yes, thank you, Chair Brice. Again, Rob Zoukero, Planning and Building Safety Director. I will be doing the staff presentation this evening for public notice certification. Public notice was published in the April 25th edition of the Boulder Daily Camera. It was posted in all required locations and the property was posted and notice was mailed prior to the 15-day deadline of April 28th, 2021. And I, before I get into my presentation, I do want to note that we have a few others folks with us for staff. We have Craig Duffin, Kevin Trot from our Public Works and Engineering Department. So they are on the call this evening so that they can help answer any technical, specific questions about the engineering studies. We also have Carson Weiss with titular Weiss on the line this evening. So if you have any, I'm going to be making the presentation very briefly on the fiscal analysis that was included in the staff memo. But we did want to have Carson here this evening if there were any specific questions on the fiscal analysis, so. Chair Brice, is it okay to proceed with the presentation?
Okay, please.
Okay, so, so last year, as you all recall, we did have a different version of this proposal that went, that the planning commission did recommend denial on it, did go to city council. That application was ultimately tabled at the applicant's request so that they could re, redevelop the plans based on the input that they had received. Since that time, as you might recall, last year, the property was still owned by Conoco Philip, Philip 66, excuse me. Since that time, the applicant has purchased the property. So Brubaker Capital Partners is still the applicant, but is also now the owner of the property. Last year's proposal included a comprehensive plan amendment request. They have removed that from their request. And they are proposing a new plan that is within the policies of the comprehensive plan. So we're just looking at the general development plan amendment this evening. So that's different than last year. We really didn't even get too much detail on the general development plan. We really focused on the comprehensive plan policy last year. So the staff analysis will be more in depth on that. So this would replace a previously general develop, a previous general development plan that was approved for the Conoco Phillips campus back in 2010. It is now a mixed industrial office, commercial development proposal. It still includes open space parks, trails, public safety, land dedications, and it includes a new internal road network proposal. So that's very similar to last year, last year's proposal. All of those open space, park, trail, public safety dedications, the road network's very similar too. So here's, I think everybody's familiar with the property. It is the former storied home of Storage Tech, which began development on this property in 1978. Again, Conoco Phillips purchased the property. They were planning a research campus on the property in 2010, actually demolished the old Storage Tech campus. Storage Tech had approximately one and a half million square feet of industrial development. The Conoco Phillips campus had about two and a half million square feet of proposed development that was approved through that general development plan. So here's a copy of that plan. It was just a one-page plan. Concurrently with that general development plan, they did have a preliminary planned unit development and a preliminary plat that accompanied that document. So there was, there was some detail in it that would be more related to a PUD that came through with that original general development plan. The general development plan is still in effect. Those do not expire. The PUD and the plat do expire if they aren't followed through on. And again, these were just preliminary at that time. So somebody theoretically could develop under the current general development plan. But of course, that was very tailored to a very specific user and campus, but somebody could theoretically submit new plats, new PUDs under that GDP. It is still in effect. So this is technically an amendment to that. So again, this, this property is zoned, what we call plan community zone district. So it does require this master planning concept as a first stage of development. And the, what you see here are the five specific items that are required by our ordinance to be included in a general development plan. It's the proposed land uses, that's either a description or regulations related to character of the development. Number of dwellings, which we don't have, last year's proposal had dwellings, this does not. The location of parks, open space, rec facilities, other public uses, and then the location type character of street. So this is really what is encompassed in that development plan. There is a zoning agreement from the 2010 approval. So they're proposing an amendment to that zoning agreement. So that's included in the packet as well. So this is again, a regulatory document. There's a lot of information in your packet about model land use mixes, concept plans. I just want to note for the commission, you know, tho, those are necessary and helpful to understanding how this general development plan could be implemented, but they're not binding. So I just want to be clear that if, if, if we need a binding component of this development, it needs to be on that GDP document or that PCZD zoning agreement. So that's been staff's intention. So I just wanted to state that at the beginning. So getting into their proposal, again, it's a, it's, it's a mix, more of a commercial mix now, and they've still broken it up into similar districts. So we have basically A through D. There's parcels and subparcels. And really the, there's some areas that are really intended to be office districts. So that's A and E and I would say C3 specifically are intended to be office districts. B is really, B and portions of C are really intended to be industrial districts. And then D is more flexible with some retail envisioned, but more of a mix as well. So there is, in your general development plan, there's a whole long list of uses, industrial, commercial uses and mixes of uses. So there is flexibility of how those things can move around. But in coordination with the height proposal, there's probably some realistic development also that we would expect to see within each of these parcels. So getting to the public land dedication proposal, this is very similar to last year. The only difference is that there was a pub, what we were calling public purpose easements that were, that was contemplated as a dog park over in this area of parcel E. That's no longer included. But all of the green areas. But all of the green areas, these darker green areas are the same. There's a public use easement still around this lake that's in the northeast corner of the property. That's still the same as well. So it's, it's, it's very similar. The public land dedications also include land for a future fire station, police annex potentially. And then there's several trail corridors that would be dedicated as public lands as well. So I'll get into more detail on that, but that's a high level summary. So the develop, this property in total is 389 acres within Louisville. 309 of those acres are subject to our public land dedication requirement. So this is formalized at the final plat stage, and that is the commercial percentage that needs to be dedicated as land or fee and lieu. The total required dedication is 36 acres. Their total proposed dedication is 59 acres. You'll see on that exhibit, some of these yellow areas, they are required to exclude encumbered, areas encumbered by easements. Utility easements, for example, can't be included ditch easements, this is Good Hugh Ditch. Those can't be included in the public land dedication because they couldn't develop those in any case. So that 59 acres excludes those easements. Just as a comparison, the ConocoPhillips GDP and preliminary PUD that came together included, also included 59 acres approximately of land dedication. 39 of those acres were within those, that 389 acre boundary. And they were also proposing 20 acres north of the development, south of Paradise Lane. I do want to call out parcel F here specifically because there is a series of intergovernmental agreements that we call the Northwest Parkway intergovernmental agreements. There was a specific amendment for, related to Campus Drive that does require a buffer between the Paradise Lane properties and this development. It didn't specify the size or the depth of the buffer, but this is intended to meet that buffer of that HIGA. So there are some other open spaces, and I'm going to talk about these in a little more detail, but I'm just going to kind of introduce them here, at least within the development. But first, there is an additional 36 acres south of development that's located in the city and county of Broomfield here. So this is US 36, and this is Northwest Parkway. So there is an additional 36 acres that the applicant has agreed to put into a conservation easement. And that would be to the city, city and county of Broomfield. And then there are these green crosshatch areas. So these are what we call common open space areas. These are, this is a term in our zoning code. It's specifically related to PUDs. But they are, again, as you're doing a master plan, I think you do need to contemplate some of these things in order to, you know, have a good master plan that, that looks at the property holistically. And this is related to their proposal for height. So I do want to mention here too, if you recall, on a general development plan within our ordinance, you cannot, you cannot approve basically height waivers. You have to generally be in compliance with our height and bulk and setback standards within the code. But consistent with the ConocoPhillips general development plan, they are asking for consideration of buildings over what our underlying zoning would allow, which is basically three stories. But that would have to be approved through a subsequent planned unit development. But they do want to set up some of how that could be approved through, you know, and have, they have some language within the PCZD agreement and the general development plan that addresses that. And, and what it's related to is if they do have taller development within either C3 or A, and I'll talk about that in more detail, but that would, if they do build over three stories in A1 or C3 as this is drafted, they, they would agree to provide a deed restriction on these green crosshatched areas. They would also, there's the, the ideas that the buildings would be clustered, they'd be taller. And so they would have more efficient use of the land. There'd be more open area that they could dedicate. It would be private, but it would be restricted to native and natural vegetation with some limited improvements. The open space and parks and public landscaping advisor, the open space board and the Parks and Public Landscaping Advisory Board did review the trail and the open space and parks proposals earlier this year. They are in support of the public land dedications as proposed. Just as, just for comparison too, since they are amending the ConocoPhillips general development plan. Again, it was a very different plan. It was a little less density, 2.5 million versus 3.1 million. And they did have more dense, taller development, really clustered at the central part of the development here. This crosshatched, or I'm sorry, the stippled area is their public land dedication. So it's different than what we see today. It's really concentrated around kind of the periphery on the north. I'm sorry, the southeast and west sides mostly with a little bit on the northeast corner. But there is a significant amount of what, of the common open space that they were contemplating. So that was 222 acres of common open space with more dense clustering in that proposal. So the proposal here is for, to allow up to 3.115 million square feet of development area. So that'd be the maximum build out. So last year's proposal, they were proposing point four A, a floor area ratio, point four eight. They reduced that to point two four. And within each of the development parcels, you can see they proposed different ranges. So there's some flexibility of how that could move between parcels. But in any case, there would be a maximum within each parcel, and you couldn't exceed 3.1 million. And so they also have their height proposal here as well. So here's just a graphic to, so you could better see where the different heights are proposed. Again, I, you know, outside of A and C3, everything would be three stories or below. They are asking for up to 55 feet for those three stories. And then where you see the one-story development, that's, a lot of that is contemplated for industrial development that doesn't typically need additional stories or building height. The five-story elements here and here are those that would be associated with that common open space proposal. So just a little bit more detail on that. So the way that's structured, so there is a note on the general development plan, but the details are actually in the PCZD agreement. And what it states is that if there is any development anywhere within parcel A that's over the three-story limit, that would, first, that would have to be reviewed through a planned unit development to verify that the, there is agreement with the city and the city council that they are achieving the comprehensive plan policy on clustering. And part of that is that they also deed restrict this common open space that's shown here. So any development within parcel A triggers these two areas. And any development in parcel C3 would trigger that common open space within B and C3. So there, it's kind of in two different groupings depending on how the property develops. They are requesting that that open space, that common open space that's proposed within each of those groupings would meet the requirements under our municipal code under section 172880 and 110 within those parcels. And so that section of the code states that when you're reviewing a PUD, the city may require additional open space, and they do contemplate common open space under 110, which is, doesn't have to be private, but it is often private open space. Should, you know, that the city may request additional open space depending on a series of factors. And then in addition, under that subsection 80, that's our waiver criteria, which says if you're requesting a waiver, and they will be requesting height waivers if they want to go over three stories, the city can also request additional open space through that waiver. So if they do provide this, they are requesting an acknowledgement that, that count towards those code sections of PUD. A little bit more on the clustering. So we, we saw the ConocoPhillips property. Just as comparison, 79% of their buildings were proposed above three stories. So they had over a million square feet of building area proposed at four stories, and they did have up to 95 feet. I don't think all four-story buildings, you know, million square feet would be at that height, but they did want allowance for certain projections of buildings that they were contemplating. And then 883, a little over 883,000 square feet at five stories, and they were asking for 65 feet in height. So the red, just for comparison, the Redtail Ridge proposal includes up to 35% of the buildings above three stories. So the maximum would be just a little over a million, up to five stories and 90 feet. So just some comparison about from what was approved previously. So just a few other items on the GDP, some regulatory items that I want to capture here. The general development plan includes a note that caps parking at the zoning minimum standards. And it also allows parking garages without counting towards the FAR maximums. So the purpose of this is to, part of the purpose of this is to promote less impervious surface on undeveloped areas. So we're cap, we're trying to cap the parking, which also promotes alternative modes of transportation. But in addition, it would lead to less impervious surfaces, more undeveloped areas within the development. There is a note related to parcel A. So you'll notice that that parcel A, if they are allowed up to five stories and 90 feet in height, that is adjacent to the open space and park dedications. So there is a, an architectural note that would, that would limit any building facade that's over three stories that's immediately adjacent to that open space to 125 feet in length. Or if they do want a building facade more than 125 feet, 40% of that building, they have to step that top story back 20 feet so that it breaks up the, the massing of the building, so it has less impact, kind of visual impact on the open space. The last thing is, you're probably all familiar with the, there's a large burn within the parcel E of the development that provides some screening and buffering from US 36. So there is a note that requires them to maintain that at its existing height. They, they might do some minor grading, I would assume, on the inside of the burn to accommodate the development, but they couldn't do anything to the burn that would change the height or the buffering that it provides now. So those are some of the regulatory notes on there. Going into the road and trail network, so this is part of the GDP. It's, it's kind of comprehensively shows all of the road and trail connections that are being proposed. You can see that one of the big things that we've been, we've been wanting is to extend Campus Drive all the way to 96th Street. So it does extend Campus Drive. That would have to be in the first phase of development. It's a, it's a mix of arterial, two-lane arterial and collector, and it includes roundabouts, roundabout access into the schools. There have been quite a few coordination meetings with the school on this design. And they are in support of the design at this point and the access plan. One of the main roads and private roads that went into the Storage Tech campus was called Tape Drive. They're proposing to rename that and reconfigure that, and it's called Rock Crest Drive. So that connects 88th to Northwest Parkway. It would be a four-lane arterial on the east side and then transition into a collector. And then there's a north-south connector called Sorrel Avenue. That's, would probably need to be a four-lane arterial, and that would connect campus to Rock Crest. So here's the, here's the kind of overview of the trail plan as currently proposed. So we did work with the applicant. As you know, we recently adopted our transportation master plan, and we have a lot of policies on complete streets, all ages and ability transportation networks. So we worked with the applicant pretty extensively on including that in their street plan. So all of the street plans include buffered bike lanes as well as off-street multi-use paths. There is a proposal for soft and hard surface trail network connections through the development. This includes connecting the Rock Creek Regional Trail into Broomfield. There's still a segment missing, but this would complete a major connection. There have been discussions on, and this is not part of the plan, but there is a, I guess, a future vision of the, of following the Good Hugh Ditch into the Coal Creek Trail. So there are ongoing discussions and possibilities about more regional connections. The blue lines are kind of those on-street and off-street trail road networks. The green are the new, the new trails that are being built in the open spaces through the, through the open spaces that are being dedicated and also through parts of the development. So there is a traffic and mobility study included in the packet. It, it does conclude at full buildout, an estimate of a little over 20,000 new daily vehicle trips. That would include about 1,923 AM and 2010 peak hour weekday trips at full buildout. There is an assumption of a non-single occupancy vehicle adjustment of 12%. They do have a transportation demand management plan commitment with this development that I'll talk about. And so that's their assumption. Part of that decrease is implementing those plans. So they do evaluate in that study what we call level of service at key intersections and around the development. And there are recommendations on short and long-term improvements that are needed to accommodate the development. So distribution of traffic is a real important part of the traffic, the transportation plan. So most of the development is coming from US 36. That's what's anticipated. Both, you know, mostly from eastbound, but also from westbound, a lot down 96th and Northwest Parkway. 88th and Dillon and McCaslin have lesser anticipated trips that would be going to or coming from this development. So these are all important assumptions within the plan. So this is just a table from the traffic that shows, it shows by kind of phase of buildout how many trips you would include in the, the average day as well as the P, the AM and PM peaks. So you can see that in each phase, and then those totals that I talked about are down here as well. So some of the, just very quickly, some of the recommended road improvements, of course, is extending Campus Drive, improving those intersections at 88th, improving the intersection 88th and Campus, of course, a new intersection where it meets 96th. There are a series of off-site improvements that would need to be made, including intersection improvements at Dillon and 96th. Widening 96th Street to four lanes north of the project. There are some other turn lane extensions that would be needed, intersection improvements off-site at the intersection of Northwest Parkway, Rock Crest and Viabara. And then there are improvements needed both at the US 36 interchange and north, where the project meets with Northwest Parkway. I think the traffic study notes that these capacity improvements would be needed eventually. You know, with or without this project, this project would require them to come sooner. But there are no specific improvements because those determined, because there's a lot of planning and coordination that would be needed with Broomfield, the Northwest Parkway Authority, CDOT on those improvements. But it is noted that those would be needed. At final plat, a lot, there would be a subdivision improvement agreement that the developer will need to enter into where we would really work out a lot of the details on costs and funding for a lot of these improvements. Again, there is a transportation demand management plan, so the PCZD zoning agreement, section 3.5 of that agreement does require implementation of that agreement. So we would review TDM plans for new developments that come in through PUDs. There is a metro district that was approved for this development. And there is a commitment to, for that metro district to help fund the TDM efforts as well. So this project is in, you know, fairly close distance to Flatiron Flyer bus system. And so getting good connections and promoting transit as well as other modes, you know, biking and other things. uh and other things, carpooling, um, those are the things that we want to promote with that TDM plan. Um, you do have the drain, a drainage study and utility studies within your packet. Uh, so Public Works is continuing to review those and those will be finalized with the final plat. Uh, but there is a series of regional drainage, detention, water quality ponds planned throughout the project. Um, there's a lot of utility work, including a sewer lift station that needs to be incorporated into the development. Um, there's a potential that um the wastewater and water treatment plants could need some upgrades, so that's all being developed. And when you see the final plat, there'll be final proposals for all of those at this time, um, but at this time you have the preliminary plans in the packet. Um, the applicant, this is new from last year, there's a sustainability plan included in the packet. The zoning agreement does require implementation of this plan um at the PUD level. And it includes all of these categories and it has specific commitments and goals within that sustainability plan. Okay, so um real quick on the fiscal analysis. So as you know, for big developments or zone changes like this, um, we do a fiscal analysis, and so we, again, we do have Carson bias with Tishler bias here. Um, they've created the city's fiscal impact model and they did assist in running um, the base model for this, for this project. So this is a twenty-year outlook. Um, different from the application last year, um, it includes a city expense for park construction. So that's in year three of the model. So again, this includes all of the revenues coming into the city phased over time, depending on what absorption we put in the model. And so it shows revenues from um, you know, uh, construction fees, construction use tax, um, property tax increases, all of those things, sales tax, potential sales tax increases. All the revenues going into the city as well as expenditures um for servicing the development from the city. So there would be a lot of road, trails, parks. Um, you know, potential city service, utility plant expansions that the city would have to fund. So we do want to make sure that there is a, a strong fiscal balance with new developments. Um, so these are the assumptions. So by our policy, we always kind of do a a full buildout scenario, and then we do what we call the eighty percent constraint. So these are the factors that we built into the model. And again, so this, this is um show, this is times a thousand. Um, so these are in millions of dollars, and this, these are twenty-year summary totals. So you can see we've got revenues by the different city funds, we've got expenditures, and we've got net fiscal result by fund. So this is full buildout, eighty percent constrained. So over the twenty-year um life of the project, based on these assumptions, there's a net positive fiscal impact of between uh forty and twenty million dollars, and so on an annual basis, that's between, um, we'll say two and one million dollars. Here are graphs that show, the red is revenue, the blue is expenditures, and the green is net result. So you can see in that year three where the city's potentially building a new park facility. Um, and you know, that, that, that net result may go down, but overall, over time, it does show a positive fiscal impact. Um, this is that full buildout scenario, this is that eighty percent constrained scenario. So you can see, you know, at, if, if, if it, if it built, you know, at the twenty-year buildout, you're looking at about um, two million dollars in net positive at that twenty-year point versus the full buildouts about three million, and again, the averages were between two and one million over the twenty years. So just a, just a few more slides, I just want to summarize staff's analysis. So we did go into quite a bit of detail in the staff report about consistency with comprehensive plan policy, and then we, because that is important for, to approve a general development plan, we'd need to demonstrate that, and then we are looking at what the purpose and intent of a general development plan is, which is using contemporary land planning principles and coordinated development, coordinated design um is what we want to look at. So it's an opportunity again to um have some customization and define the character of the development with a master plan. So on the comprehensive plan analysis, um, it, this is consistent in staff's review with the comprehensive plan. All of the proposed uses are within comprehensive plan policy. The density is, the comprehensive plan does limit height to three stories. It says taller buildings are allowed if clustered um to provide buffering. So again, we've set that up, that would, needs to still be reviewed through the PUD process. But we've tried to develop some standards and criteria to help that along if that is the um ultimately approved. Um, there's a policy to promote walkable districts connected to the rest of the city with internal services. I think there are some elements incorporated into the plan that um move towards achieving that. The fiscal policy states that there needs to be a neutral fiscal benefit um and a positive economic benefit. Um, a-again, our fiscal analysis is showing a positive fiscal benefit. Um, so as far as the, um, having contemporary planning principles, coordinated development, this does provide a major employment hub for the city, which the comprehensive plan um is anticipating. Um, some contemporary planning principles that it's implementing are clustering, complete street networks, integrated off-street trails, um really improving regional connections as well. It improves access to the Monarch Campus. It does provide open space and park dedications. Um, I think in staff's review on more, you know, compared to the ConocoPhillips campus, there, even though the, the areas are the same at fifty-nine acres, um, you know, we really tried to concentrate that on the areas of the property um that were more contiguous and on undeveloped areas of the property um that could potentially be developed, but had some natural value. There's, it's covering some drainage ways where you tend to have more habitat. Um, and then there is a new, there is a park dedication, um, so that can provide some recreation amenities and services for the city. So those are all um some of the things that we're achieving with the general development plan. So we are recommending approval, we do have a series of conditions. Um, there, uh, the first one is just a clarification um on building height. I, I don't think it's very substantive, it's just connecting the GDB to the PCZD zoning agreement language um more clearly. Um, two, again, is just a clarification, there is an intent to have pedestrian underpasses as the trail goes under campus drive in two locations, so we want those labeled for clarity. Um, I didn't get into the detail of this for time, but we did ask for verification, anywhere right-of-way was needed to build the road network. Um, we're asking for letters of intent from those property owners, there's three areas. Um, the only letter we haven't received is from the owner of ten seventy-eight, Eighty-Eighth, South Eighty-Eighth Street. The applicant has informed us that they do have agreement, we just don't have anything in writing at this time. Um, and then there are a lot of, there is a public works letter attached with um a handful of technical outstanding items. So we are asking that those be addressed before the city council hearing as well. So those are all staff's recommended conditions. Uh, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Director Sakerel. With that, we will open it up to Commissioner Questions of Staff, uh Vice Chair Rice.
Yes, um, Rob, Rob, before I start, I just want to commend you on a truly excellent staff report. This is really well done. I, I found myself, as I read it, constantly finding the answers to the questions that I was developing. Um, as I read through it, uh, up on the next page, literally, and uh um, taking that, the amount of information that was in, involved in this application and putting it in the form that you did, um, I'm sure required a tremendous amount of work and it was truly appreciated on, on my part. Um, let me just hit on a few things here that I want to emphasize as I understand this, and let me start with this building height issue. I think the, the sense of this is that this is going to be a um a lot of tall buildings and whatnot, and I want to compare it to the ConocoPhillips um GDP that we've already got on the books here. So gi- give us some sense, what's the comparison in building height as proposed by this, this new proposal versus what's already been approved?
Sure, so the, again, the, the ConocoPhillips PUD included um, a, a larger percentage and more of the building area contemplated as taller four and five-story buildings. So again, um, almost eighty percent of the ConocoPhillips development was anticipated to be either four or five stories. So that was um almost two million square feet of the two and a half million square feet of proposed development was four and five-story development uh between sixty-five and ninety-five feet in height. Um, this proposal includes thirty-five percent of the total buildings to be, and that would be the maximum um above three stories. So this would be maximum in both cases. So that's about a million square feet. So um, a-again, it's not completely apples to apples because the heights are a little different. Um, a- and we don't have kind of final site development plans, but roughly, it was about twice as much of the ConocoPhillips proposal was going to be the, the taller, more than three-story development.
Okay, and wha- what's the highest building that's in this current proposal?
Ninety feet.
Okay, now, just as a point of comparison, do you have any idea what, what the highest height is of, of the Monarch Campus?
I do not know um what the tallest building is there. We could probably get an estimate um for you. Um, I know Lisa's on the line, kind of standing by, so she could get, we have a program where you can measure building heights off aerial, so Lisa, if you could work on that.
You bet, will do, thanks.
I, I think that would be a, a really good point of comparison, just to get the, an understanding as to what kind of height we're talking about um as it compares to what already exists there. The, the next point is, just give me a, some comparison between the ConocoPhillips uh proposal we've already approved and compare that to what we're talking about here today in terms of density, the, the FAR.
Right, so the um, so the difference is two point five, uh, sorry, yeah, two point five million square feet versus three point one million square feet. And I believe the Conic, and I believe that equates to about a point two versus a point two-four FAR.
Okay, a- as compared to the, the two, give, give me again the bottom line on both sides of it.
So ConocoPhillips was two and a half million square feet versus three point one million square feet, which is about a point two versus a point two-four FAR.
Okay, alright, so we're, we're still talking about a less than a quarter, right?
Yes.
Alright. Um, okay, now let me turn to parking here real quickly. I mean, I, I kind of chuckled to myself when I was reading this, because it seems like when we go through these proposals, we're constantly searching for um, making sure that there's enough parking. And so, you know, we're, we're looking for people to exceed the minimum. Whereas in this particular case, what we're looking at is the, the maximum allowed of parking on this uh um space would be what we would otherwise consider to be the minimum. Did I get that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and so, and there's also, um, I think there's a very clever use of, of, of uh planning concepts here that would actually encourage the construction of, of the parking structures, right?
Correct, that's the intent. We at least, I would say, we at least don't want to discourage them, if not encourage them, to, and over that more open land.
Normally, a parking structure would count on the FAR, right?
Correct.
But we're saying we're not going to do that, and then, so in that way, then these folks are encouraged to do structures, which would lead to less asphalt.
Correct.
Yeah. Um, alright, now, the, the other thing that I thought was, was most interesting about this proposal is this amendment to note number two, um, which then leads into this whole concept of clustering, right?
Yes.
And so the idea here is, as I'm understanding is, is that we want to encourage the clustering of buildings so that we have more, um, while not publicly dedicated open space, but still in terms of how the project looks, it, it leads to a far greater uh appearance of open space. Is that, am I getting that right?
That, yeah, that's correct. So if you're limited to three point one million square feet, the, you, you know, the, the more you can have taller buildings, so you put that square footage in a smaller footprint, there's more open areas or undeveloped areas. I think part of clustering also is strategically placing the buildings so that that new open space, you know, contributes to either view sheds or contiguous to other open spaces. So that's what we've tried to achieve with the location of those as well as they're shown on the plan.
Okay. Um, I know I'm moving through a lot of subject matter here quickly, but I know a lot of people have questions, and we have a lot of comments that we certainly want to hear from the public. Um, the, uh, the water and sewer issues, the way I read that was is that essentially consideration of the details of that is going to be deferred to the final plat and then development agreement processes. Is that accurate?
Y- yes, I think that's accurate. Um, I, I think that the Public Works Department, I, for this level of development, um, they're comfortable with um, you know, having this GDP approval, but there is additional work. Um, and that will get finalized at final plat, so we'll know more precisely um, you know, what the utility needs are going to be at that time.
And they can't proceed, of course, until we approve final plat, where all this will be considered, yes?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, and it, my only question is that customary, I mean, is, is that the way we would normally do this sort of thing?
That's correct. We typically don't require final um drainage reports, final utility plans at a GDP level. Um, we have, you know, we have a lot of that, you know, the traffic study is usually much more important. In this case, we, and the scale of this development, I think we knew that, you know, one, there's a lift station required, and two is that our plant capacities were pretty close um, you know, to capacity, so we felt it was important at this stage to have a pretty big, you know, have a um, a pretty well-developed understanding to make sure that there weren't going to be any major issues that we couldn't resolve, but I think we feel like everything's resolvable with final plat.
And then I have a very similar set of questions with regard to the sustainability issues. As I understand it, those as well will be handled, the details of it at a, at later approval phases of this project, is that correct?
That's correct. Um, other than there is a plan with, you know, commitments and goals, and the PCZD agreement does have language committing them to follow through on that plan and submit at PUD verification that they're complying. So there is kind of the first, the foundation, I guess I would say at this point, but there'd be much more detailed planning at the PUD stage.
Okay, alright, and then, you know, I, I asked that question because I, I read carefully each and every comment that came from the public. Um, and they were, as you might imagine, on a case like this, very substantial. But a lot of the criticisms were lodged towards there wasn't enough detail to the sustainability issues. And the way I read it was, is that those details are, are part of later phases of consideration. Is that fair?
That's correct, yeah.
Alright, alright, I, I probably literally could ask you probably dozens of more questions, but I'm going to yield now to my fellow commissioners because I know they have a lot of great questions too. But Rob, thanks again for a terrific um presentation, both in your report and then also orally here tonight.
Thank you. I think Lisa might have an answer to your building height question.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so we have access to kind of a subscription service that allows us to measure um approximate heights for buildings and elevation. And so it looks like kind of the main body of the high school, the two-story structure is roughly thirty feet tall. And then for comparison, kind of the peak of the round um gymnasium roof is probably around, it looks like to be around fifty-five feet tall.
Okay, good, that's the information I wanted, thanks Lisa.
You got it, thanks.
Thank you very much. Additional uh commissioner questions of staff? Uh, Commissioner Deal.
Yeah, Rob, um, is it customary to have so much uh detail in terms of building height uh by parcel in the GDP? Um, and then having to have this language, I mean, you, you referenced the fact that this is all non-binding. Um, but, uh, and you're adding this note to the development program, right, that, you know, this, this GDP does not approve any heights.
Yeah. Well, so I would say it's, it's customary in that ConocoPhillips GDP contemplated this, but it, it was also concurrent with preliminary PUD. We do have other GDPs that address height to a certain extent. I'm thinking the um uh, the, the hospital just to the west has, is part of a GDP, I believe, that contemplates different heights, so i- it isn't unheard of um to have language on heights within a general um, to have language on heights within a general development plan. Um, I I think, you know, we've analyzed this one and and significantly more detail than we might on other GDPs as it relates to the code requirements. Um, so I think we feel confident that we're um, you know, the way we've set it up to really acknowledge that you can't approve this until PUD is the 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 right and consistent way to do it based on how our code's written.
My second question has to do with sustainability. Um, the the PZZD had a a reference to a, I think it was in January, um, SGA. And I I had, I got the memo uh, from April, and maybe I just missed it in the uh, extremely large packet. Is that available? Is that something you could maybe send out to?
Yeah, the sustainability plan is in the packet. Um, I could look up the number, and I think it might have the wrong date on it, now that you mentioned that. But it is, it's in the application material, so it's part of number two. It's all that significant, and there's within number two, um, there are um, in number two, there's a series, I'm just looking it up real quick here.
Is it? Is it this one?
I, I'm not sure. I can't see that.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's item seven.
Is it the WSP is the the?
I think so.
Writer of the memo? Okay.
I think that's it.
I just want to make sure I was understanding the reference. Okay.
Item seven, sustainability commitments.
Okay. That's it for now?
Thank you very much, Commissioner Deal. Commissioner Moline?
Thank you. Um, a couple of of questions, and I too, Rob. Great, um, great preparation for us. You really have helped us, uh, given us the tools to to really have a great discussion about this this evening. One, I guess, sort of easy one, just um, maybe for all of us to get us all on the same page. It's, I think it's helpful to hear what the city's total annual budget is, so we can kind of visualize what an imp, sorry. I I feel like I should know that off the top of my head too, but just to help us visualize what what a, what, how much of a, you know, a one to two million dollar annual uh, contribution to the city's budget would be, kind of, as far as.
Boy, you know, you know, Carson might even know that better than me, so Carson, if jump in if you want, but I mean, I'll, you know, I would say that, um, you know, it's, it it's not, you know, I, our capital budget's in the tens of millions.
Okay, okay.
Um, so it's, it's, it's not, um, you know, i- it's not like we're doubling our budget or anything.
Okay, yeah, but yeah, yes, yeah. Okay, that that, I think, just to help um, all of us get a a sense of what the scope of of what these revenues would be doing, what these tax revenues would be doing. So that is, that's very helpful. Um, one, one question I have is actually sort of the flip side of what um, Comis, one of Commissioner Rice's questions was, which is, um, so the, it's, we, the applicant, we could ask the applicant to provide more details about some of their commitments, like with respect to sustainability at the final plat stage. Could we require those now at a GDP stage? Is there a re, is there a, a reason why we couldn't ask for greater commitments on the, on some of those things at this stage? And I'm just curious if you?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I would say, um, I think it's worth discussing, and discussing with the applicant if there are specific items in particular. Um, I think it's a good conversation to have at the GDP stage.
Okay, okay, great. I think just two more. Um, one is, when we're looking at those height waivers, uh, potentially in the future, um, and one of the considerations will be an examination of whether that development has clustered or not.
Mm-hmm.
And that clustering will be within those parcels, not the I mean, at that point, we won't be able to look at the clustering of the entire development again. Is that right?
That's correct. That's what's anticipated. It would just be with the development within those parcels.
Parcels, okay, okay. That's what I, that's what I took. And then my last, my last question is, um, and and this was in some of the, again, as as people have mentioned, really good public comments on this. There were some comments about the, that the GDP allows quite a few uses across all of the office, industrial, all of the parcels. And I believe some, some folks had, had mentioned sort of a concern about, um, clearly, this is not, i- it's very different than ConocoPhillips. It's not a single corporate campus situation anymore. But I'm, I'm, I guess I am a little sympathetic to the ability to be able to plan a bit more of a community and and refine some of those uses into some of those parcels more um, with a little more, bit more definition than is currently allowed in the GDP, which seems like it would, could lead to sort of a hodgepodge development. And I'm, I'm wondering if you have a thought on that?
Yeah, so I, yeah, a couple of thoughts. Uh, you know, one is that then certain, within certain office and the industrial areas, there's a provision that's, you know, that says that only up to twenty percent can be kind of support retail services.
Yes.
You know, we have, we do, that'll, we, it's, in the Colorado Tech Center, we actually don't allow some retail and services without a special review use.
Okay.
Square footage limit, but it does have to go through at least a staff special review use. And I think the intent is that to kind of maintain that character and not have too much of that hodgepodge.
Okay.
So there is a provision to help limit a little bit in there. Um, you know, I I would say, it it's hard to understand too, because of the terminology we use for some of our uses, but if you actually read through the list for, say, the office districts.
Yeah.
They are primarily office allowed uses. Um, you know, you're not going to get as, you're not going to get a a big shopping mall um, in there. You're not going to get industrial uses in the office districts, for example. So there is some differentiation. Um, I think if if the commission and city council and the community wanted more definition, we could certainly try to put that in.
Okay. I think for me, it's maybe those parcels that are the ones furthest east in the development that are, um, those ones seem to have the most um, the ha- have sort of the widest range of uses. And um, so anyway, I appreciate your thoughts on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Moline. Uh, Commissioner Howe?
Yeah, I I want to say thank you, Rob, for this report. Really, really great report. And also thank you for all the citizens' input. Um, I was able to make it through all the emails and just great, great feedback from all the Louisville citizens and other emails. Uh, first question that I had was, um, the traffic studies show a lot of different patterns with increased traffic, the majority going from U S thirty-six, to and from U S thirty-six. Um, and the second to go to Northwest Parkway, both of thirty-six and North of, Northwest Parkway will probably be able to um, facilitate that traffic. But then fifteen percent go to and from the ninety-sixth street north. Um, so that, I broke that down to fifteen percent being about three thousand trips per day, um, in my rough estimate. Are there um, projections that you, that you guys could could speculate on? What's the drive time delay that that would uh, cause on on ninety-sixth street? That'd be significant. Have you thought about that at all? Significant or not?
Right. So there, so there is delay information in the traffic study. So if you really get into the detail, they actually analyze that the seconds of delay, and then they grade it, A through F. So that is in there. I don't know what it is off the top of my head. I know the applicant's traffic engineer um, with Fox Tuttle that did the report um, is, I believe he's here this evening. Um, he could probably answer that in much more detail. So I might defer to him on that.
Okay, I I'll open it. I'm opening that up. I may be able to find it on my own there. Um, maybe that's a question for him. Hey, you know, there's a lot of mention about, in in the citizens' comments about the the silt, the lead silver uh, categorization of the buildings. Um, and and I guess there's a lead gold. You you know, why not go for the gold? What's the, what's the difference uh, here?
Yeah, I, again, I, that, that's a, um, you're probably going to defer to the applicant to see kind of where, why they came down on silver um, in their sustainability plan, and if there, you know, if there are other ways they might be interested in addressing that. I'd say certainly, um, you know, there's more, you have to consider, there's probably some more cost associated with gold. Um, not that that's not a reason to do it, but I think that's a good question for the applicant as well.
Okay. Um, let's go on to to just a few more. It seems like the the structures that they're proposing are the industrial office and retail, majority seem to be industrial and office. Um, and the closest thing I could think of, well, let me take a step back. There seems to be significant reduction in city revenue when you go from full occupancy to the eighty percent occupancy. And and so I'm, I'm trying to think of what 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 kind of an idea can you give us as far as what's a reasonable tendency rate there? The Colorado Tech Center would be the closest thing I could think of with industrial and office. Do you know what the current vacancy r- rate of the CTC is?
Yeah, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Um, so I think, you know, getting the information.
Whoops, sorry to interrupt just a moment. I think we need to if I could ask the other commissioners. There we go. Thank you. Go ahead.
So I, the the tenure, so the information I did receive on that is the tenure average vacancy rate is about fourteen percent.
Just to clarify on that question, though, while we're on the topic, this is about buildout, not about vacancy rates and occupancy rates after construction.
Well, yeah, the the fiscal analysis assumes a buildout rate, not an occupancy rate. So you, we took the, the, you know, the hundred percent, three point one million square feet, and we brought that down to eighty percent of that. So we assume that not all three point one million square feet got built. Um, so.
But that could be the same as a vacancy rate.
Uh,
Because it's not being built or paid.
Yeah. So if it gets built, the way the fiscal model works is if it gets built, we will generate um, you know, uh, building permit fees, construction use tax, property tax will go up once it's built. There are, we do have some factors in there, um, like we have, we have worker spending, for example. And so certainly, if if, you know, you build it and there's no workers, then that worker spending function of the model would go down. So there are some factors related to occupancy, but the the big number factors are more related to the actual buildout.
That makes sense to me. You you'll recoup some of that revenue if it's built, uh, maybe not all of the revenue.
Yeah.
Okay. So to say that, if we, we're, we're, I'm just trying to get a gauge as to what we could expect, a- according to the current, you understand what I'm, what I'm trying to do, uh, according to the current vacancy rates or buildout rates. If fourteen percent were, were vacant, and that seems to be the going rate for at least the Colorado Tech Center, um, that could significantly reduce the revenue from our expected hundred percent occupancy and revenue rate. Okay.
Yep.
Um, and maybe this is a good question for the traffic study. The last question is, uh, it seems like with these traffic models, most of the, most of the um, traffic are commuters. But I'm sure that some will be local residents too, and and is it safe for me to assume that this will put an increased demand on Louisville housing?
So, yes, I, you know, I think this, you know, at full buildout, you know, this would include several thousand new employees um, within the city. And so certainly, when, you know, as we discussed earlier, um, you know, as the region, as employment grows in the region, there does certainly need to be new housing to support that new employment growth as well. So, um, yes, I think hous- housing, um, that there would be housing pressure from a development like this.
And with the remaining development areas, you have a better idea about what else can be developed in Louisville than I do, probably. I guess we probably don't have those numbers right now, but maybe, maybe that would be something good to look at, would be, would, could we relieve those pressures with that amount of employee eh, new employees?
Yeah, I mean, I would say, no, no, we couldn't within our city boundaries um, right now. I mean, it is a regional, I mean, it is also, you would want to look at it regionally as well as within the city, but um, certainly, we couldn't absorb all that housing as were planned and zoned within the city's boundaries.
I think, I would imagine that some of those would be commuters too. Thanks so much for the presentation, Rob.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate that. And also, I mean, great questions from the Commission of Staff, uh, which leaves me with no additional questions of staff at this time. Um, though I know there are any number of issues that will uh, come up. Um, just to to kind of uh, get everybody on the same page, we're approaching nine o'clock right now. Um, this commission, and I I don't think any commission, council, or board uh, does well at late night hours. Um, and I am uh, very happy that we do have a large number of attendees here who are going to want to speak to the issues at hand after we give the applicant a chance to make their presentation. Um, that said, I don't anticipate we're going to be getting through all the public comment this evening. Uh, and depending upon uh, what time uh, we uh, end up with the applicant presentation, um, we may just be able, only to address uh, commissioner questions of the applicant, and then may um, be uh, continuing the meeting to a later date to be able to uh, take into account um, everybody's comments, because uh, if nothing else, that might may be the single most important aspect of our public hearings. So with that, then, I would like to ask the applicant to please make its presentation. If you can begin with your name and address, please.
Sure, Stephen. Um, Jordan, are we pulling up our, are we able to pull up? There we go. Okay. My name is Jeff Bockel with Brubachel Capital Partners. I live at three nine one two South Torres Peak Drive in Superior. Um, well, first, thank you. Thank you all for your time. We really appreciate you taking the time to talk about Redtail Ridge tonight. Um, and it's good to see you all again. We were last in front of you, amazingly. Uh, it's crazy to think about. It's been almost a year since we were in front of you, actually. And so a lot has happened since June. And we've really, I think you saw, hopefully through Rob's summary and report, we've really absorbed the feedback that we received from you, from the community, from city council. Um, and we've completely reimagined, completely redesigned the site. We're really excited to show you these changes in what we're calling Redtail Ridge two point zero. So we've added a number of resources to our team, including an environmental habitat partner, a sustainability partner, and a design and placemaking partner. And so they're all joining us today, and you'll get the opportunity to meet them, actually, during tonight's presentation. And go ahead, please, the next slide. So, okay, what we'll cover, this shows what we'll be covering in our presentation, which includes details on our habitat and sustainability plans, walking you through the placemaking and the identity of the site, uh, the community amenity opportunities through opening up the site, and then addressing some key topics, and finally giving you an example of a user experience through the site, and really trying to give you a feel for what it's going to be like to be on the site. So um, as you said, we're getting late. Our goal is to be efficient through this presentation, so we're probably going to go fairly quickly. Um, but know that, of course, we are available, and also our entire extended Redtail Ridge team is on the call to answer any technical or any questions that you might have. Can you go ahead, Jordan? Thank you. So with our re-envisioned land plan, first and foremost, we're seeking to conform to current policy. And this was a huge part of the feedback from you all. And this was a huge part of the feedback from you all and from the community that we received. And this chart shows you that everything we're proposing in this new 2.0 plan matches Lewisville's comprehensive plan. And the policies and the guidelines for this site are all adhered to with this plan. So we're at the rural designation, which is just under the point two five FAR. Building heights, which we've already discussed a little, but three to five, that's in line with the comprehensive plan. And then no residential, again, conforming the comprehensive plan. So I'm really, really sticking to current policy with this new plan. So it's a fresh start. And the starting point that we started with was we have this new land plan. So let's evaluate the inherent assets of the land that we can preserve, that can be enjoyed by the community, can be enjoyed on the site. And this includes of course, the existing lake and the ponds, the trees that are out there. There's a large shallow valley and you heard Rob mention how we've utilized, I think, the least disturbed is sort of the best part of the space and the sites for open space on the northwest side there. And of course, then the fantastic views of the Flatirons, of the Rocky Mountains. So we worked our plan around these assets and we've substantially bolstered our habitat preservation. And so to that point, we partnered with High Plains Environmental Center. And Kristin Oles, who authored our Habitat Protection Plan, is going to walk you through some more details on that. So Kristin, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Kristin Oles. I am the Restoration Ecology Project Manager at the High Plains Environmental Center. I live at 798 Chalk Avenue in Loveland. The High Plains Environmental Center is a nonprofit in Loveland. And we, this is our 20-year anniversary. So we now have a 20-year history of working with developers to protect and improve habitat as part of their development plan. And so our goal with this work is to prioritize ecosystem health while also meeting development needs in the process. So the proposed site for Redtail Ridge does have a significant amount of existing habitat. And this habitat has the potential to become very high-quality habitat with a little bit of extra work. And so we developed a habitat management plan, as Jeff mentioned, for how we envision that, or what work we envision is necessary for improving this habitat and how we expect the site to change and improve as that work gets completed. We are also planning on helping providing feedback on habitat-friendly building design, landscape design, and detention pond design, which is something we're particularly excited about because that gives us an opportunity to actually add additional high-quality habitat to the site. Next slide, please. So these are just some pictures to show some of the work we've done at our environmental center. We, our environmental center in Loveland is actually protected open space that was preserved within the Centerra Development, which is a larger kind of commercial residential industrial development here in Loveland. And we also had noxious weeds to deal with. We had to do some restoration work like reseeding. But if you look on the bottom left, you can see some of the improvements that we've made at our site, which also has a lot of wetland area. And in the process of completing our restoration work, we were pleasantly surprised with the arrival of a rare plant. This is the tulip tension, which is the beautiful purple flower you can see on the bottom right. And that kind of highlights our approach to restoration in these settings, which is to, which is to restore ecosystem health and function. And then that will attract interesting wildlife, rare plants, lots of different types of pollinators without us having to actually do that ourselves. And that is what we're hoping to help with at Redtail Ridge as well. Thanks.
That's great. Thank you, Kristin. Okay. So another important category, you can go to the next slide, thank you, that we heard through the previous feedback was of course sustainability. We've already talked about it to you tonight a little bit. And really what we're saying is we've heard you and we've implemented substantial sustainability practices. So first, we added Josh Radoff as a partner to lead our sustainability efforts. And I'll be turning this over to Josh in just a second. But Josh is the former Senior Director of Built Ecology at WSP, a national and really renowned sustainability consultant. Josh is also an adjunct professor at CU in renewable and sustainable energy. And Josh authored the sustainability plan for Redtail Ridge 2.0. It includes both sustainability commitments plus larger sustainability goals. So of note on this is that all of these commitments stay with the land. So regardless if they're sold, if it goes, if another developer comes in, if a user comes in, they stay with the land. So it ensures the execution of this vision well into the future. And then additionally, I think it's important to note that our team worked very closely and directly with Katie Baum. And Katie is now the full-time sustainability coordinator for the city. And she has vetted and validated the plan that we have in place, ensuring that it interfaces extremely well with Lewisville's Sustainability Action Plan. So with that, Josh, would you please walk us through the sustainability plan in more detail?
Yes. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for having us. Can commissioners, can you hear me all right? Okay, thank you. So my name is Josh Radoff. I live at 1985 Blue Bell Avenue in Boulder. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate all of the questions and interests thus far this evening. And in the comments, those were great to read. I should, I would start out by saying that one of the things that we're most excited about with regards to sustainability is simply taking a previously developed piece of land that's sitting on a major transit corridor and bringing it into productive use. And doing so in a way that identifies and restores natural systems on the site and the assets, the natural assets that it has and helps transition the region to a zero-carbon economy. When we look at a given site, we try not to sort of apply some sort of generic overlay to it, but really sort of identifying what do we think the priorities are and then focus on those. So I should sort of point out that, you know, as Jeff mentioned, what you're seeing is in line with everything that we've read in terms of the city's sustainability planning efforts and with some great feedback from city staff, Katie, that Jeff mentioned. So, so we've been, appreciated that dialogue. Also, I would say, as noted by, earlier by Commissioner Rice, you know, while we're trying to establish the intent in as many of the details as we can, many of the specific measures will continue to take shape as the project evolves. So there's a, there's a bit of a balancing act there. Jordan, can you go to the next slide, please? So first, just to outline, and I know there's some questions about this already, but we're using LEED to establish really a baseline for site-wide sustainability here. We are, will be using the current version of LEED, which is version 4.0, with the option to use points from version 4.0, a 4.1 for those of you who are into that kind of thing. We established the silver level, which I think is a good baseline for a non-downtown project. And Commissioner, how this may, so to speak to your question, you know, my sense, having done a number of these projects, is if you're a dense and a transit-oriented development, LEED Gold is, is a totally appropriate target. It's, it's a little more challenging without those credits available, which is the logic around why we decided to sort of target silver. And again, as a baseline, LEED may not be the most exciting program, but it forces projects to take a holistic approach and addresses many of the areas across the five different categories as possible. And you can see on the slide that we're committing to earning points in these sort of specific areas, which we think are regionally and site-specific appropriate. In addition, you know, to the design and construction, we really intend to support sustainable operations for the project, which can be really unique in a multi-tenant work environment. If anyone's worked somewhere like that, especially around moving towards zero waste work, workspace or work environment by creating the infrastructure for recycling and composting, and then enabling the services to be there as well. Next slide, Jordan. With regard to energy and carbon, you know, our approach here is effectively including all of the elements that would be considered parts of decarbonizing the energy use of the site. And, you know, what, what those constituent elements are, you know, first is energy efficiency. That kind of goes without saying. Our intent, even though code is to use the IECC, the Energy Conservation Code of 2018, we're just going to jump ahead a cycle and commit to 2021. So that should establish a solid foundation. Plus, any project that achieves LEED will have to sort of do a decent job in the energy section, which probably means we're exceeding 2021. But again, that, that's a function of what the ultimate sort of building program looks like in design. We will be making all the buildings solar-ready and ideally facilitating the solar development for the buildings as they come online. There are a lot of details to work out there and we'll continue to sort of work on those details as the project develops, but it's very much our intention to see solar at the site. We will be requiring all buildings, was that a hint, Jordan? Let me know in the chat if it's taken too long. Requiring all buildings to, to use all electric HVAC systems. And recommend pursuing that option wherever possible. Again, that may be sort of program and building specific. We'll be supporting the transaction to electric vehicles, which I'll speak about in a minute, including e-bikes and transit usage. And we'll make sure that all buildings are sub-metered and tenants are paying for all their energy usage. Next slide, please. One of the big areas that I, I think is, this, the site is currently doing well is in the site development aspects. And the preservation of habitat areas, including riparian areas, and establishment of open space in parks, including the 80 acres that you see noted here in open space and conservation easements. I would say as importantly, the site designs, the design of the, the internal site itself, will use native vegetation, natural systems, green infrastructure for stormwater management. And an attempt, you know, we talked about biophilic oriented site plan, which just means connecting people with natural elements by creating those natural elements and creating spaces through those. So Rob, who will speak next, will, will speak to that in more detail. And then lastly, next slide, with regard to transportation and mobility. You know, the starting point, as was noted earlier by one of the commissioners, is not exceeding the city's minimum parking requirement. That's, that's, that's like a big, important component of the sustainability plan for a number of reasons. And by creating an internal street network that is safe, walkable, vegetated, which is part of what we would call, as you see on the slide here, the complete streets concept that, that again, I think Rob will discuss in a bit. We mentioned supporting the EV transition and there's a number of ways to do this. One is by making all of the parking areas EV-ready. And then providing a certain of, number of level two chargers throughout. I think a big part of this is the sort of like statewide EV infrastructure plan is evolving. And we're continuing to sort of see what that looks like and see how the, the site can, can contribute and participate to that. You know, I think that's probably a good place to stop there. From here, I'll turn it over to Rob, who's with Design Workshop, and he'll be talking about some of the functional vision for the site. And I'd look forward to answering questions later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Everyone can hear me okay? Wonderful. My name is Rob Berg. I am with Design Workshop. I live at 1647 South Way in Lakewood. I want to start by talking about how we started with this revamp or redo of Redtail Ridge 2.0. So we start from the beginning with this intention to create a walkable district that's grounded in this development in a strong sense of place. And as Josh was talking about, connecting people to nature. After all, there's no other site like this in Colorado. And we recognize that and we want to design a district that, that celebrates that. So if you pair these physical assets with this incredible place and our proximity really to the education and the knowledge that exists within this area near Boulder and Lewisville and Superior and Brumfield, you have an incredible recipe for what we like to think is innovation. Next slide, please. This campus will be grounded and focused on ideas like bio-science or life science or aviation. And for the first time in Colorado, we'll be able to co-locate all of these companies in a singular ecosystem to thrive on the collaboration and this physical proximity that again, doesn't exist anywhere else in Colorado. Next slide, please. So when we begin to lay out the program on the site, we did so in a series of these districts, as you see on the screen here. The districts are meant to, to have their own identity and their own soul. By sub-districting the plan in this way, we allow for greater feasibility and diversity while still promoting this idea of a complete innovation hub. All of these districts, as you can see illustrated by that green line, are connected by this pedestrian prioritized circulatory system. A system that Jordan's going to go into far greater detail about in just a few minutes. Next slide, please. These are really great images that evoke kind of the character of the place that we're trying to create here. You know, another important component of the plan is to celebrate this equitable access to these incredible views to the west. We all know the site so well and, and it's just such a captivating place to be. We want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to experience this site. And for the first time in, in multiple decades, the public will actually have access to the site and be able to experience all of these wonderful things that have been so privatized for, for so many decades. We do all of this by this, by creating this publicly accessible central gathering sport, space. This new space is, is a walkable space that connects all of these sub-districts together. And it's a place where everybody can come together to enjoy the qualities of the site. Additionally, we see an opportunity here to potentially even connect to our neighbors to the north and to the west at Monarch High School. Potentially there's some level of STEM collaboration or programmatic collaboration between what's going on at the high school and what's actually going to happen here in this innovation hub onsite. Next slide, please. So this slide highlights this, this concept I was talking about, this, this innovation sort of ecosystem, if you will. This is a very different than any other existing tech center or corporate center throughout the front range. And in fact, this is about partnerships and full integration of the supply chain in a single place. So imagine if you can, a place where all of these great ideas are born and those ideas are nurtured through research and development. And the ideas then are manufactured into reality, tested and refined back in research and development and ultimately distributed. You know, this immediate feedback and closed-loop system and approach to ideation and collaboration is an incredible opportunity for this development and something that I think is really going to set this place apart from, from its competition. Next slide, please. So here's the current plan in its entirety, without any labels or anything over the top. This plan, as stated before, contains the complete program at a full build out of 3.1 million square feet. The plan demonstrates, as you can see, a 46% reduction in the total density. And as was pointed out in the earlier comments, is below the city's lowest point two five rural FAR designation. But even more importantly than all of those numbers, it incorporates places for people and places for ideas. And, and next, Jordan's going to go into some of the public amenities that are also included in this development that really provides the soul and the character of the place.
Thanks, Rob. I'm Jordan Swisher. I live at 1734 Pioneer Circle in Lafayette. And I have been working on the GDP amendment for this property since its nascent stages. And one of the aspects I value most about our revised plan was our ability to reduce the density significantly while still maintaining great community amenities. Now, Rob already spoke to the public lands dedication and protected areas. So I will just quickly highlight in the dark green, we have the open space dedication. We also have here in the corner, northwest corner, the light green 15.6 acre park land dedication. And for context, this size park parallels the size of a community park just south of downtown. And while the commission hasn't been able to walk the property, I did want to bring up that many members of the Open Space Advisory Board and the Parks and Public Land Spacing Advisory Board were able to walk the property with us. And these lands were identified as high value and quality for the community. Now, Rob mentioned, we also have this great parcel in the city and county of Brumfield that we have acquired. It is home to the Rock Creek Wetlands and will be protected as a conservation easement, which really just offers additional buffer and separation of the municipalities. And then the other areas Rob has touched on, but in culmination or cumulatively, we're talking about 133.5 acres, potentially unbuilt, undeveloped and natural. And between the 390 acres in Lewisville and the 40 in Brumfield, that represents 31% of the land area. So trails, regional trails and connectivity to trails is incredibly important to the community. And we wanted to be sure to integrate seamlessly with the trail network that was. And we wanted to be sure to integrate seamlessly with the trail network that was around the periphery of the property. So. It meant always prioritizing tapping into the existing US bike lane. As well as finishing or completing the link on our property to the underpass that's under Northwest Parkway today. As well as adding north and south and east and west thoroughfares as extensions of the network and adding additional links. All in all, it's six point two miles of hard and soft scape as well as bike lanes. As we look inwards, there's lots of opportunities for onsite experiences and excursions. And here's to some samplings of potential journeys and destinations on the property. I could very easily see myself taking my daughter to soccer. And while she practices, I walk our dog along Campus Drive, under the underpass into the open space. Around the lake on the east side of the property and then circle back for a nice end of day loop. Now, I just mentioned walking under Campus Drive. So Campus Drive will have two pedestrian underpasses to ensure. Connectivity of the trail network and pedestrian safe crossings. Campus Drive is an incredibly important public improvement. It's essential really to connect the between ninety, excuse me, eighty eighth street and ninety sixth street versus where it dead ends at Monarch High School today. The addition will allow for secondary access for emergency and first responders. And we worked closely with BBSD to design this road. And it really is a complete street concept as all of the roads at Redtail Ridge are. And just for reference, if you look in the top right corner here, this is a sample street section of what Campus Drive would be like. So. Complete streets, safe modes for all. So you have these large multi-use pathways for variety of users. Separated safely by landscaping. You have the on-street bike lane with striped buffering. And large medians for the separation of vehicle traffic as well. So that's the complete street model we're trying to embrace at Redtail. Now Campus Drive is one of the important thoroughfares. We have three primary roads. We also have where Rob mentioned was the tape drive. Connection between eighty eighth and Northwest Parkway as well as north-south sorrel. And and I will say actually this, these roadways, because of the lower density are now narrower. And have less lanes than what we had previously proposed. I did want to mention that. Now importantly is particularly the Campus Drive connection, but all of them. They actually allow for a different access points, which allows vehicles to take alternative routes and redistribute. Traffic or vehicle trips on the roadway network today. So Campus Drive actually ends up alleviating some stress points along eighty eighth street as well as Dillon Road. See here. Oh, and also these roads are not just going to benefit the school campuses. They're also really going to help a Vista Hospital, who's Lewisville's primary employer. So the fiscal gross property taxes, you know, we included some assumptions for the fiscal model, but just on a basic property tax. Evaluation, we have a chart here that shows by taxing entity, the properties, what it currently generates and then what it could potentially generate at full build out. Now full build out would take ten to fifteen years, but once built out, this would be a twenty six million dollar annual number. And as you can see, BBSD stands to gain substantially as well as Boulder County, the Fire District and the City of Lewisville. And I think Keaton had asked about context on the the budget. But this tax number for the City of Lewisville is the equivalent of twenty seven percent of the current property tax base for the twenty twenty budget. And at this time, I'm going to ask Jay Hardy to speaks to some key topics that come up with our development program.
Great. Thanks, Jordan. Jay Hardy with Brubaco. I live at three oh four Habitat Cove in Windsor. I want to speak a little bit regarding the parking. We've talked a lot about parking in the program. And and really, it's been mentioned that, you know, we're not going to exceed any standards and we're meeting those minimums. And you know, parking is not all created equal. I know it sounds silly, but when you think of a structured parking as related to. Maybe a large shopping mall, it's very different. This this is some reference imagery that we have. That would would show plantings in between separation through medians. And then structured parking is shown up at the upper right hand. We did talk briefly about incentivizing the structured parking and not having it committed to. The buildable square footage and we do think that this will lead us to having more structured parking, which ultimately will lead to more open space. Excellent. Want to also talk about traffic. There were some early references to traffic and this just really compares a previous user and approved user and then our program. And as you can see, there's about twenty five hundred additional trips through a day. The right two columns are essentially what's happening in the morning and what's happening in the evening. Next slide. I'd like to go into that a little bit. You know, traffic is really driven by two things. It's really volume and timing. And so what we're looking at these two, two different graphs, on the left hand side is what would be in the the peak trips in the morning. On the right hand side is the peak in the afternoon. So if we took a Conical Phillips where it was a single user. You know, they're probably loading between seven thirty to eight thirty. In the morning and then offloading maybe four thirty to five thirty. What our program shows and you can see that it builds over time. So on the left graph. Twenty twenty five and then twenty thirty and then twenty thirty five. You can see while it grows, it never gets anywhere near what Conical Phillips would have been. In the peak morning. And then as we move to the right. Same situation in in your twenty twenty five, twenty thirty and thirty five at at full build out. Again, we never reached. Or even get close to what Conical Phillips was having in the peak time and location. Next slide. So the demand management strategy, Rob did a really good job of talking through this, but I do want to. Talk about the the recommendations and the commitments here. So. Jordan and Rob have both spoken to the Regional Trail Network and how important that is, both from the aesthetics. But also just from a mobility side. We're also the plan which has been mentioned, the transportation coordinator. We think it's super important that somebody wakes up every day worried about how do we do a better job with. Reducing the amount of trips and and increasing multimodal efforts. Eco Eco Pass for employers and employees we spoke to. And then van pool and carpool coordination. You know, we live in a biking community and a biking region. And so that's going to be very important that we. Really step up in those areas. And that was one of the really great parts of what Katie brought to the table is really pushing us. To make sure we're doing even more of that than you layer on all the work Josh has done has been has really been great. And then supporting and sponsoring Bike to Work Days and then probably the bottom right here, the Flight on a Flyer is one of the more successful partnerships that will. Be engaging in in the in the demand strategies. Now we can go. So infrastructure, one of the things that we wanted to to touch base on is the the amount of infrastructure that. Is going to be added to the city through the development. So about ninety million dollars is expected to be. Constructed within the the program paid for and through the development. About a third of that is just roadways alone. There are the offsite improvements that were spoken to. And some commitments there. And then there are selected areas of the maintenance funding. That'll be done through the metro district and not at the burden of the city. And then through a few items there, the traffic management plan that Rob's already touched on. The big key for us is just really being in alignment with current policy. Next slide. Northwest Parkway. So this is our, our, obviously our key corridor on the east side. And we wanted to make sure that we're in in good communication. So we have been in constant communication with not only the concessionaire. The owner, the Parkway itself, the city of county of Broomfield. And really did an evaluation of what is the impact our project has on the Parkway. And through those conversations, we identified short and long term. Infrastructure needs and as we move, you know, further down the path of. The the program and the development will end up with a form of an MOU that would be. All of those parties signing on that. So we do have some immediate improvements that will be done that Rob spoke to. And then there will be additional communication on on future developments. And then finally, we've touched base, I think three or four people have touched on this, but I'm going to I'm going to hit it one more time. So I like this diagram. This is related to the clustering and the common open space. So the diagram on the left is shown. Essentially one small breakout of the project. These are all shown as three story buildings, surface parked. And you can see where the 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 open area is on the left hand side where the A three is identified. So in this case, we have six buildings, seven hundred twenty thousand square feet on fifty three acres. As we move to the right, basically what we do is we eliminate a couple of buildings. We have the same square footage. But then in the hatched areas, we have the opportunity to add as much as twenty five point eight. Additional common open space areas. So these would be private spaces. But they would be non-buildable through that relationship. So you can see, you know, the downsizing from six buildings. To four buildings. So. As we look through the buildings, one of the important things I'm going to let Rob kick into is who's actually using the site and this will be. And wrap up our presentation, but Rob, why don't you take it away and talk about the user experience?
Thanks, Jay. So so this is kind of a fun thing we do. The whole Redtail team took part in this and. And and we really try to get into the head of the potential users of the project. And you can see the spectrum there, everybody from an employee to, you know. Folks that really have no association to working onsite but are a neighbor or a resident. I won't have time to walk through all of these. We'll walk through just one of these tonight, but it's important to remember. That for the first time in multiple decades, like I said before, this site is actually open to the public. And so while we're going to focus on the employee tonight. You know, this, we're doing a lot of thinking about how this is going to be experienced. From the neighbors and the residents and how they might use the site as well. So go to the next slide. So if we if we think of how Andre, who actually works here, he lives in Lewisville with his two kids and his family. And and he has a job in bio science research. And so he was attracted to. Both Lewisville and this this site because it is grounded in nature and it's everything that he loves about being in Colorado. Go to the next slide. If we think about how Andre might start his day in this, you know, with a couple of kids at home, it's this chaotic storm of trying to corral your kids into the car and. And once he leaves. For the project itself, he arrives onsite and he makes his way. From the parking lot into one of these really great pedestrian corridors. Again, the the site's extremely walkable. It brings him to that central spine space where he's got this really great mountain view, that upper right hand image. You know, and 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 socializes with friends, you know, while he's grabbing a a bite to eat and and maybe a coffee in the morning. Or go to the next slide here. So throughout the day. Again, one of the big differentiators and what we're trying to promote here is this cross collaboration of ideas and innovation. And so. During his day, Andre is is getting his steps in by traversing the site between his R and D facility and the manufacturing. And and maybe some of the downstream businesses that are all part of this this one ecosystem on campus here. And then I really like this idea of, you know, at the end of his day, before he takes off for home. You know, we have over about six, six miles of trails onsite. And so he takes advantage of all of this with some coworkers. We he gets a few laps in before before heading home and he really gets to decompress. And take in the natural beauty that he's surrounded by and 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 and, you know, really immersed in. So. With that, I'll let Jeff close us out and and I just want to thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Rob. And so so Redtail Ridge two point O. We said it before, but just one more time, we're completely aligned with the comprehensive plan for the site and we heard the feedback. The feedback from you, the feedback from the community. And we totally reimagined and changed the plan, which I hope you saw tonight. And we worked very, very closely with city staff. Really to create and put the plan you have in front of you now. So we've listened to the community. We've gone above and beyond the legal requirements for the site. Our full team, all of our consultants, all of our partners are in attendance here tonight. So we want to answer any questions you have, technical or otherwise. So please let us hear them. But with that, we thank you very much for your time, for your attention tonight and. Herman, Brian, I saw, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to poll the commission at this point to kind of get a sense of, it's late nine thirty. Whether you prefer to have. A short period of time, ten or fifteen minutes for a few questions of the applicant. Or whether it would be cleaner for us to begin a continuance with commissioner questions of the applicant. At the date we would continue to. If I can ask you all the. Give me your thoughts on that.
I'm willing to go till ten o'clock with applicant questions.
Well, so we yeah, we begin questions. Oh, yeah, right. Of commissioner questions of the applicant. I'm somewhat hesitant to go that late. I don't know how I see agreement there.
Yeah, I think that would be a clean break. And then and and then it seemed like then the next time we could enter the public discussion. To, I would say, continue, continue on and do questions from the commission to the developer.
Okay, I don't know that we'll get through our questions in half an hour, giving them time to reply, of course. Yeah, maybe if you don't think so, we can make it. We could do a clean break here.
I'm open to. Starting and and seeing how far we get, I guess, too, but yeah.
Let me ask Steve, how are you feeling, Steve?
I'm doing well, thanks. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Because I was, I was sensing your suggestion that maybe you were thinking that an adjournment at this point would be appropriate, but I'm willing to do either way.
Okay, well, why don't we plan on going until ten o'clock then? With commissioner questions of the applicant. And then we'll continue likely to a future. With that then, I would like to open it up to commissioner questions of the applicant. Vice Chair Rice.
Yeah, I I just actually have a couple of questions for Mr. Baco. I I referenced in my earlier questions, the copious remarks that we've received. One of the, there, there's a lot of great information there, but one of the main complaints. If I could synopsize it is that you're going to take this parcel and basically turn it into a sea of asphalt and office space. I I just wanted to hear your rebuttal to that, sir.
Yeah, sure. And understand that comment. We've heard that. And you know, a couple of things with that. One, and we've talked about this a little bit tonight, is we are working off the minimum. Required number of parking spaces for Lewisville. So. And we've also set that as a commitment to not go above that moving forward. So. Literally the parking that you see is the least amount of parking we're allowed. On the site. So in addition to that. And Jay talked about it a little bit, but it's kind of this concept where, hey, all parking is not created equal, right? So you've been in parking lots that are a sea of asphalt. You've also been in parking lots where. There is some greenery, there is some sort of integration with the landscape around you. That's our goal. And I think we're aligned with the community in terms of, we don't want big seas of parking either. That's not an attractive thing. So we're using the minimum and then really trying to create attractive parking landscape in the project.
What about? Part of it is fully this massive amount of office out there.
And sorry, Tom, you broke up a little bit there. What the question was what?
I apologize. Let me, let me come out again. The other side of it is they say that you're going to create a sea of office in a, which otherwise is open space. So let me hear your comments or rebuttal to that.
Yeah, I'd say, you know, the site is is not a greenfield site, right? It was previously had development on it, Storage Tech, which was a major corporate campus. And then, of course, there was approval for. Two and a half million feet with Conical Phillips at the time. And so in fact, you know, this is not, we're not taking open space and creating a sea of office. We're actually taking previously developed space. And I think reinvigorating that space and and you heard. Josh talk about this a little bit in terms of the sustainability plan and and sort of putting this space back into production. And candidly, opening it up, a space that's been locked off and corporately owned for decades to the community of Lewisville.
Right, then just, go ahead. I'm sorry, all right.
No, no, go ahead.
Secondary inquiry I had was that you've seen the proposed resolution from planning staff. And they've they've attached four conditions to their proposed resolution. Do you guys have any quarrel with any of the conditions as stated by staff?
We don't have any quarrel. No, not with any of those conditions. We're working, number, number three, we're still working on, but we don't have any. but we don't have any many problem with the conditions, all four of them.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Rice.
You called on me, Chairman. Jeff, with regard to the conditions and the no quarrel, you know, obviously, condition one, the understanding that this GDP amendment does not in any way approve, you know, the the height waivers or the additional height to the structures. I also wanted just to to, I guess, reread the comprehensive plan. It was a little bit of a misleading note in your in your deck with regard to what's allowed in the rural special district. It doesn't necessarily say three to five stories. You hear I'm reading from the comprehensive plan. Rural is three stories. Additional stories permitted if structures are clustered and located out of the public view shed and buffered by surrounding topography and open space. So you heard my question earlier with regard to what might be in the GDP amendment with regard to height approval or a conceptual approval, even though Rob was very clear that this is not binding. So I guess a question for you would be if you didn't get approval for five stories in parcel A or in other areas because it wasn't considered, or it didn't, it blocked the public view shed, or, you know, wasn't considered buffered by some. Would would your project still be viable?
Yeah, it's a balance. You know, if you have more stories, like we've talked about, you have the opportunity for more open space on the project. And so we've had a lot of feedback about height and we've also had a feedback about coverage. And so I think with the GDP and I have the fur of Rob Zuccaro as well, but I think what is trying to, is trying to lay some framework at a very early stage, meaning the general development land use plan, to say, if we're going to go forward and apply for more height than the three stories that's allowed with the comprehensive plan, then here's some stipulations that would have to be met, but it's not an approval. So we totally understand that. And I don't think someone can correct me, but I don't think it's laid out. Certainly as an approval, we just wanted to set some guidelines to show a roadmap to show how it could be done.
And I guess just from the commission's standpoint. From the commission's standpoint, with regard to a roadmap, right? I mean, this does obviously provide an overall GDP amendment, but, you know, I I think I'll speak for myself, would be looking forward to seeing what you would actually plan at the PUD level for those buildings and if it met the requirements in the comprehensive plan with regard to to height. The other area, and and I'll just say, you know, for the record, also, I'm in general very, you know, in favor of the program and the project with regard to, with the exception of potentially the height in the PUD stage, which which we can deal with. But there is one other area that's, I think, a little bit on the weak side, and I think you saw a lot of the public feedback with regard to sustainability. I appreciate you listening and bringing in some expertise and help with sustainability. I I would look to see a little bit more enforceable language and less we will evaluate, we will consider. I think, you know, with a twenty year GDP, you know, we're talking about twenty forty two, right? If we're if we're in twenty forty two and we're still worried about greenhouse gas and still using, you know, natural gas to, you know, fuel all these buildings. I mean, that's a problem, you know, in twenty twenty one, now is the time that we all need to make the commitment to figure out ways to get where we need to go to get carbon neutral. So, you know, one of my requests will be, you know, what can we do to tighten up and make it a bit more strict and structured in terms of what you really will do from the sustainability standpoint? And those are my two points.
Thank you.
Okay, if I go Steve. Okay. Hello, Jeff. I I'm going to ask sort of the same question that I asked Rob, which was the, I guess, some of the concerns I saw from the public was that the development appears to have so much flexibility that many different uses could could be cited on each of the individual parcels. I just was looking at the GDP. Of the thirty three rows of different uses that are available at the GDP, only thirteen are not available across all the entire parcel. So in other words, twenty, I think, if I did my math right there, real, real quickly, twenty of the thirty three uses could be available at any of the parcels. And I'm I'm just wondering if you would care to respond to concerns about how how will the development try and kind of make sure that that the site doesn't end up with a school here and a hospital here and but but or and that those uses could be occurring throughout the the entire property? And how do you retain sort of that vision, overall vision for the development, I guess?
Yeah, and it's a good question. You know, a coordinated design is part of one of the goals of the PCZD, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And and that's, by the way, we're in full alignment with that goal because what you're describing from like a hodgepodge, you know, a hospital next to something is a horrible way for us to try to create something that's marketable or feasible in the market. So I completely agree. Now, flexibility is still important right now because we have a empty blank piece of paper, right, that we're dealing with. But as we move forward, I can assure you, we are aligned and you saw, you know, Rob presented our current, you know, concept plan that, as Rob Zuccaro mentioned, is just a concept to demonstrate what the land uses could be. But we have, it's a combination of you have sort of clustering, you know, you notice some industrials in the same area. But also, this this idea of of connecting the industry or the industrial with the office.
Okay, yeah.
Is fantastic because because that's where we can really create some innovation. So but to go back to your question, we're completely aligned. I don't, I don't want to have a sort of checkerboard of different uses out there. It'll be, it'll be more like the PCZD wants, a coordinated design. But right now, the uses show some flexibility. And as Rob Zuccaro also mentioned, a lot of those uses have, you know, some commonality defined in a lot of, a lot of different ways that are.
That's true. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
On that note, how would you drive that kind of a unified approach to occupancy and tenants?
Chairman, what do you, tell me a little further of what you mean.
Well, you speak of, you know, not having kind of random uses scattered throughout. How would you drive a kind of a, you know, unified approach?
Well, I'd say from a plating process, it's not, you know, it's not all platted at once and there's phasing, right? So if we're phasing an industrial portion of the property, this, we're going to have a section and you saw this, the the communities that Rob Berg showed you that we've already, the districts, we've got planned in there. So we're going to start with one phase. And if a campus user comes along, we're really thinking about them on sort of the western side. And I think there's going to be a natural attraction to the parcels that that are drawn there. So I think from driving it, it'll be partly, Chairman, the phasing that draw that drives it, because we're not going to phase, let's say, an industrial portion. And then someone comes in and right next to that, we're going to put an office. We're driving, you know, we're saying, okay, your office, we're putting you over here. We're going to make it congruent and make it feel like a wonderful place to have your business. And that's going to be important for us and I think the community as well.
Thank you. Commissioner How, did you have any questions?
Yeah, so thanks. Thanks, Jeff, for that presentation. And thanks for asking and answering all these questions. So in the in the zone C three and and just I just help me understand what this common open space is. Because I understand that it's privately owned. So, you know, when you're saying you have a north to south and east to west connectivity with the trails, it seems like that that's dependent on the private ownership of that land. And I see the connectivity around that that pond or lake on the northeast side of C three being a connector, an intersection of those trails. So so could it, couldn't it be that someone could say, the owner of C three could say, this is private property. We're actually going to fence this off for a little bit. And in that case, then the the whole trail system would would not be valid. Could that ever happen since this is privately owned?
Jordan, you want to?
Yeah, I just quickly want to clarify. There is dedicated trail corridor in blue on the GDP that's thirty feet wide that runs the full span. And then the segment that you don't see in blue is covered by the public purpose easement, which is the orange overlay onto that lake, which also encapsulates the thirty foot trail corridor around that public purpose easement and is would be documented in the public purpose easement. So rest assured, that would not be a possibility. That continuity will be intact.
All right. Thanks for clarifying that. I was I was worried about that. And then and then just comment on the, because I think there was some, was some public comment on the 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 lead silver and gold. And I think there's a previous explanation that the gold would be more appropriate for like a downtown. But could you go into more detail about that?
Well, I'm going to defer to Josh. Yeah, please, please take that one.
Sure, yeah. I I think it's a good question. You know, downtown projects would essentially, if you're looking at a scorecard, a lead scorecard, clean up on, sorry, do very well in points with regard to transit connectivity and density. And, you know, the for going from one tier to a next, from silver to gold is worth about ten points. There's ten points there. So if you run a scorecard, you know, down at Union Station for a project down at Union Station in Denver, you know, and you're doing the same level of type of things that we're talking about doing here, you'd be in a gold category. But here, or or in sort of suburban, more suburban type sites, we just sort of find that the same level kind of translates. It's not to say that gold is unachievable. I don't want to miscommunicate that. It's just a, it's just a bigger lift. And, you know, you get to a point within the lead environment, anyone who's gone after a lead platinum project, you know, at some point, you're you're chasing points and not focused on the things that are sort of most beneficial for the project. And and at an early stage like this, you know, I think our intent is just to establish a solid foundation and build from that. So that that was some of the rationale that went into where we where we ended up.
And I think just to build on the previous commissioner's comments, the the underlying theme there is the sustainability and and the the ideas and goals from today may not be the same in another twenty years. So we're trying to, trying to think ahead of the curve and think about what could we do now to be to be ahead of that sustainability curve? Because I think that seemed to be a big concern about the citizens, citizens as well. I think that was it that I had for today.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner How. I have a few questions. I want to begin with some of the ones that are kind of transportation oriented. In particular, regarding the US thirty six intersection and traffic load on it and its, you know, future failure essentially as to how that will play out. You speak to it some in the presentation, but can you kind of recap that a little bit as to how you think this will work well for Louisville?
Yeah, and Chairman Brown Eyes, I think if we can have Bill Fox chime in, is that, here, here I see him coming. And Bill, maybe introduce yourself. Bill is our transportation consultant. I think he can address that specifically and in good detail. So Bill, can you, can you address that?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, I'm Bill Fox with Fox Tunnel Transportation Group. I am in on North Seventy Ninth Street in Boulder County. And specifically related to the the Northwest Parkway Corridor and how it accesses US thirty six, that interchange there is potentially going, well, it will become congested over time. And and it at some point in the foreseeable future, that intersection will need to be reconstructed and given more capacity to handle the projected traffic that's 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 forecast in this area. That answer is true if if Redtail stays vacant, just like it is today. That that will likely have to happen. That interchange will have to be addressed probably by the year twenty forty. Even without Redtail. What Redtail does, and as we saw earlier, much of the traffic is to or from the US thirty six corridor. So your question's a good one. How is it gonna affect that? Well, it's going to accelerate the need to address, to improve that interchange. The moving, the moving part or the uncertain part is what about the Northwest Parkway plans or the future Jefferson Parkway? And how does that relate to interchange with US thirty six? So it's kind of a complicated puzzle. And it would be very difficult to to predict when that, you know, when that's going to happen or how that's going to happen. But e- either way, with or without Redtail, the community and C dot and the Northwest Parkway are all going to be having this conversation about improving that interchange in the future. In the meantime, we've been talking about what you could do to get folks to move more efficiently along this stretch of Northwest Parkway, north of the interchange. And and there again, we don't know of the the full long term plan for that corridor, but there is the ability to provide some additional capacity at grade by maybe providing a third southbound lane, for example, in that area.
All right, thank you. Regarding, in the presentation, it makes a point of saying that it's a transit connected site. How how do you see that as, as this being a transit connected site?
Well, when we look at the site, there's a couple inherent assets that are very proximate to the site that we really want to take advantage of. One, which Jay mentioned, is the the RTD stop that would connect into the Flatiron Flyer, which is, if not the most successful line, it's got to be one of the top three or four for all of RTD in Colorado. And so tapping into that is is huge asset. It's twenty eight hundred feet from the, what I call, north side stop to our front door. Now, that doesn't get you into the heart of our site, right? So we've talked about bike shares. Our TDM has shuttle that will take you. We're also going to be working further with RTD about getting people, it's that last mile connection, which is in the best interest of our site, of our plan, of RTD, to really have that connectivity. The other one that you all know about is the US thirty six bike lane and what a success that's been. And so that goes right really through and on the southern border of the site. So tapping into those two inherent assets is what we're talking about, Chairman, when we refer to those. Things that how do we really, we have those already, which is wonderful. So how do we finish and get them to the site so people will fully utilize them as much as possible, which is a complete alignment in what our goals are. And I think with the transportation demand management plan as well.
You you mentioned a transportation coordinator as an employee. Who would they be an employee of?
Yeah, Jordan.
It would be, it would not be employed by us. It would be a contract with, we would work with a TMO or transit management organization to establish a contract. And the the Metro District has funds not only for infrastructure, but also for operations. And that would be the the funding in perpetuity for that role.
Thank you. And just a brief last question. What's your definition of EV ready parking?
Conduit to the lots that can be tapped into is how it's currently contemplated. We don't specify it. Josh, I should let Josh answer this.
You're good. I mean, and Steve, we're kind of using the the lead EV ready language back for head. So, yeah, conduit is the main thing to sort of parking areas. And and then, yeah, and then the, and then, yeah, the question was just about EV ready.
All right. Thank you all. So we have hit the ten o'clock hour here. I would propose to the commission that we look at continuing hearing and and begin with some additional questions of the applicant. Commissioner Rice.
What I was going to suggest is that we we adjourn for the evening now, but that we commence at the next meeting with another round of questions of the applicant. That way we can fully exhaust that resource. And there, I'm sure there are a lot of questions that have occurred to people already tonight and will in the interim. So that's where I would say we pick up.
I sounds good to me. Lisa, can you chime in on what we'd be looking at at this point for a continuance?
Sure. So it sounds like May twentieth, we do have a planned planning commission meeting.
Sure. So it sounds like, um, May 20th, we do have a planned planning commission meeting, um, one week from tonight. And, um, it sounds like kind of no additional analysis or time is needed. So it seems like a May 20th continuance. Um, it's probably appropriate for the 6:30 PM, May 20th meeting.
Thank you. With that, then I would entertain a motion to continue.
A motion to continue for May 20th.
Chuck it in. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate, especially everybody, uh, from the public who did not get the opportunity to speak this evening. We hope that you can join us in one week's time and look forward to your comments.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, commissioners.
Certainly. Thank you all. We do have, uh, some other quick housekeeping stuff here. If there was any additional, um, we actually statements or announcements from staff. Staff comments.
Um, I don't have anything else this evening for comments.
No, nothing further.
Uh, no, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Yeah. Thanks, Steve.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Rob, make sure you turn off all the lights at the